Okay, you go.
Good evening. This is Tuesday, January 26, 2016. It is 7:00 PM and you're in the Cohasset Town Hall at the meeting of the Board of Selectmen unless, of course, you're in your living room, in which case at least you know where we are. We have a full agenda tonight that should take us to about 9:00. On the other hand, to get started, we have the call to order and our first order of business as it is always is to stand and say the Fledge of Allegiance. The Fledge of Allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda is public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have public comment this evening? Chair recognizes Mr. Lee Jenkins. Have you signed in?
Yes, I have.
Please step forward.
Okay. I'll make it quickly. I'd like to discuss or at least comment on the audit, the initial audit we have just came in. I have not seen it or I have not read it, of course, and I believe it's the same thing it's been for the last six to 10 years, my cash management. And I feel very, I feel we have to address it. And I feel that our employees should not be handling cash. It should only be a credit card or a check throughout all departments in the town. Now recreation also, at the present time, I believe, has a credit card account. And if your child comes to the town for any activities, you have to pay something for that activity. They can use a credit card. I see no reason why we can't start at one location, maybe the ATF, and get it set up and go through the problems involved in setting it up. You know, we're going to have paper problems and so on and so forth. But this thing has been festering for, as I said, six to eight years, even when I was on the Selectmen. It couldn't yet be done. I don't know why. I just feel like it's not a major thing. Now you're probably have to work with the town accountant and the town treasurer and town manager. But I'd like to know when we're going to be able to handle this.
Well, with respect to the timing, I defer to our town manager. But one of the things I'd like to point out, especially for the listening audience, the audit actually has shown over the past seven years enormous progress. And it's something of which I think that anybody who's served in any capacity for the town should be proud. And one of the areas where we progressed most obviously is in cash collections. The points of cash collection have fallen rapidly. To your point, they are not fully automated. And again, I think that's, at this point, I defer to Chris to discuss that in a little bit more depth. But we have actually done and adopted strict practices which hadn't been done, hadn't ever been touched in the past, including cash collection policies which dictate how much can be, not how much can be collected, but what timeframe over which that money can be collected before it has to be turned in, how it has to be accounted for, how it has to be received at our end. So that the points where there could be disruptions or discrepancies are reduced dramatically. Your point's well taken. And for that, Chris, I turn it back to you with respect to essentially the potential of eliminating cash collection altogether.
I know that's something we've talked about and as Steve just, Chairman just pointed out, we have tightened cash reconciliation immensely. So the treasure collector, we have adopted a policy and the treasure collector staff went out of every department to work with them. So it's tighter and cleaner and, and we are looking, for example, the transfer station is a location where I think we'd all like to see credit cards and other alternative debit cards and other electronic payments. It's not in a good location to do that right now. They're not plugged into the world well through the Internet or wireless. But it's something we're most certainly looking at. And if we, there's actually a proposal that we're working through capital and we're working through all the town's boards and committees as part of this, which would radically improve our IT backbone to allow us to move towards a cashless, much take even better strides than we've already made. We are moving to web-based dog payments, by the way. That's going to happen probably in July. We've already laid the foundation for that. We already do taxes online. So there's a lot of stuff. And so it's, there's very few locations where this cash, we've also considered centralizing it. So for example, if you're coming into this building, you have to come to the treasure collector. It's just thoughts. So it's one spot, coming to one location. If you're in this building, you go there and you bring down a voucher to the building department, for example, if you're paying by cash, to eliminate that. But ATF, I think, is a location that we need to, it's high on our radar screen, so.
I thought Comcast and Verizon had lines in there. I'll check.
Connectivity is not good up there. It's not good.
I think they have a direct line, but I'll check on that.
Yeah, no, no, no. There's a proposal that would enhance our private, our town network, which will allow us to things we can't do right now. So we can talk more about this advisory.
All my point is that the credit card machine can go through any network. It doesn't have to go through our town network. It just goes right out, comes back in. It's printed out at the end of the day. Safeguards are there. Nobody handles money.
To a degree, you're right. At the same time, I'd be very cautious about simply using whatever network is around, especially if it's attached to any other town function. The security of the network is something that our IT folks have been working on and working toward religiously. So I understand your point, but expedience in this case may not.
It doesn't have to go through our town network and go right over the line like every other business organization in the world does. It doesn't have to go through anything. Go right through Verizon or Comcast lines, I believe, so.
We're definitely, we're definitely looking at something comprehensive that'll, I think, allow us to do, to make electronic payments much more easy in more locations.
I'm just saying that this is a brain science. This is not brain science and it can be corrected very quickly. And I just want to let you know, I believe I'm on the advisory board, which I'm a town employee. I'd be willing to follow this out, at least start it there. I'd be willing to do it for zip, so just keep that in mind.
We talked about, what about checks?
No checks, no.
So you said no problem with checks?
No, it's not cash handling.
So what we do is really to talk about eliminating the checks. So if somebody went down to the DPW, they could give a check or a cab and not, just the elimination of cash. That's what we're talking about?
It protects the employee. More than anything else, it protects our employees. We don't need a conflict with them.
And we have already got the floor and somebody should make sure.
Just keep me a mic.
No, no, you're on my short list. Thank you.
Is there further public comment? Lee, have you signed in?
Yes. Leonard Jenkins, Chair of the Cohasset Water Commission. I just wanted to give you a brief update on our water withdrawal permit. Every 15 years, we have to go through a new water withdrawal permit. And the state, in their innate wisdom, has come up with this plan that one size fits all. So there are some towns in the state that are consistently in drought condition. So everybody else is now under the same type of situation where we are going to be going from 85 gallons per person per day to 65 gallons per person per day. It was supposed to take effect in August of 2015, but because when Governor Baker came in, he had delayed that. So it's up now for August 2016. And we have a meeting coming up on February 10 at 9:30 with DEP. They're coming down to talk to us in Desitee. Now, I don't know if you're aware that we are the only town in the area that has not had any drought problem or any water restrictions in recent history. We have put in the reservoir. The reservoir was put in in the 1970s because in the 1960s, there was a report done that projected that the population of Cohasset was going to be 20,000 people in the 1980s. That never happened, but we have this immense water source. And we are selling water to Hingham at Linden Ponds because Linden Ponds could not have been built without us supplying the water. One of the major drawbacks of this new water permit with this 20% decrease in water, it means that if we have a very dry summer, we will have to put in mandatory restrictions for irrigation. And that will have a domino effect, not just on us, which will have us show a decrease in our revenue, but also on people who are wanting to have vegetable gardens. Not, I'm not even talking about watering their lawns, but if they want to have any ornamental shrubs, any ornamental trees or fruit trees that require water, they're going to be hard pressed because we'll have to put in restrictions. And then that'll also have an effect on landscapers and garden stores because, you know.
Is this a DEP rule?
It's a DEP rule, yeah.
It's called an unfunded mandate?
It's called a regulation.
We have a meeting coming up with Representative Bradley. Let's make a notation that this is one of those items that needs to be addressed with a, as a DEP rule. I mean, it may be difficult to change the direction of the ship.
I know. We're hoping maybe we can get an exemption because we have so much water. This is what the problem is.
Is there, is there a process for applying for exemption? Do you know?
I don't know. I mean, I've talked to the governor's office about it and it's been referred to EEA.
EEA.
Environmental.
Energy and Environmental Affairs.
Thank you. So I'm waiting to hear back from them.
My bigger concern is, with due respect to watering lawns, vegetable gardens and shrubs, my bigger concern is the potential impact it could have on a very tender balance sheet.
Oh, yes. Well, what it will mean on the bottom line is an increase in water rates. I was talking at the garden club this morning and explaining the situation there. And one of the members said, yes, that's exactly what they did to my brother's town in California. They put in all these restrictions for conservation. Then they found out that they weren't selling enough water in order to meet their budget, so they had to raise rates.
Well, that's, that's the larger concern.
That is a very large concern for us because people know where our rates are right now. And then in order, it took us three years to get the permit in order to sell water to Linden Ponds because it takes a long time to do things like that.
What's the, if you looked at it over the course of a year, what is the average daily use of a household currently or, I'm sorry, of an individual currently?
We're between 68 and 69.
So it would be a reduction no matter what?
Yes. And then, you know, you will be fined and you will have to put in mandatory restrictions according to these new regulations. Yes.
Can I just get, I want to make sure I understand this.
Yes.
Starting in the middle of 2016 sometime.
August 2016, possibly. They have not given us a definitive date yet.
So possibly around that date there. The town of Cohasset is going to be restricted from issuing more than 55 gallons.
No, it's 65.
65 gallons of water per day per person.
It's, yes, it's supposed to be an average, it's supposed to be an average over the course of the year.
Okay. Now what is that, that limit now is what, did you say 80 or something?
It's 85 right now.
So we can do 85. So we have all this water. People are asking, what if they draw on more than 65? What happens? Are you going to stop it though?
That's what I'm saying. There will be mandatory restrictions because what they do is they take a look at what your population is and what you sell to non-commercial users over the course of the year. And when you go over that, then they say you have to put in restrictions.
Lee, guys, if you don't mind, I'd like to, I'd like to halt this here.
Sure.
Because this is actually a topic for deliberation.
I know. Well, I just wanted to inform you about our meeting coming up February 10 at 9:30.
What I'd like to do, if we may, is bring this back to the agenda.
Sure.
As an agenda item, so we can discuss it broadly. But in the meantime, I appreciate the alert.
Hi.
And Chris, can you, can you find a spot on, you know, even if it's on, well, if we have availability on the next meeting agenda, possibly bring the water commission back in.
We'll talk. We'll work on something.
I have a quick question. It's just a technical, your date, February 10, what meeting is that?
It's DEP coming down to talk to us.
Great. Thank you.
Before they come back in, we'd like to have a question, your question answered, whether or not there's an amendment, what that process is. So let's make sure we know what that is.
An exemption.
As part of this discussion.
Maybe that's, is that something you might give them?
We're going to try. Yes, I've been trying.
Just so we know what the process is. Great. Thanks, Lee. Is there further public comment? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to an item actually not on the agenda, but it's just, it's one that Chris wanted to announce. So if you, if you're, allow me to hand it over to Chris.
You blunted it right to the audience. Please come on up. So we, wow. I think I need glasses as part of the Maya Health Plan here. So, pull up. I was fortunate to be able to go to the Maya lunch at the Mass Municipal Association meeting and their annual meeting, I should say, on Saturday, where the town was awarded one of two statewide Excellence in Creating a Cultural Health Awards, which we presented to us. And Kevin was with me. And I just wanted to have our two chairs of our Staff Wellness Committee, Paul Lennar and General Arm here.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you and all the committee members, as you said, all the committee members.
We've already had a press release sent out to Amanda, so we're already covered. You know, we've had a picture. So we're right on top of this. But this is, this is, thank you.
Thank you.
As an aside, Chris, if you would, take two minutes and maybe explain for the audience the basis for the Wellness Committee and how it gets started.
So two years ago, as part of our efforts to look at our health rates, we were exploring what we could do. Now there's changing the plan and all of that, but one thing we said, well, what if we work on, we worked on our claims. How do we do that? We do it by looking at our culture. So we worked with Maya on a pioneer program to start a wellness program. And wellness, you know, you think, you know, everybody goes running. Well, it's more than that. It's consumerism. It's how to be a good medical consumer and shop around. It's how to, you know, get better drug prices. It's how to live healthier and think healthier and plan healthier. And we start, and it has to be, it's really, I'm 100% behind it. We had a group that was 100% behind it, but it really is a bottom-up thing. So a whole lot of things came out of this. We did a great weight loss program, middle high school versus town hall, and 140 pounds were lost. A whole person disappeared. Not in the OPEB liability. I'm sorry. But, but, you know, that, and it was fun. And we had an award and it went to the high school. And I, what did they end up doing with that, by the way?
They put it towards the garden, the kids' garden.
So they put the award to the kids' garden at the high school. So it was a really great program. We've done some other things. We did a program for, which was very timely this year, so for plow drivers on how to eat when you're plowing, you know, how to eat quick energy snacks and stay alert when you're driving. So, and we did some healthy cooking and we had a community, we had a staff hike through Wampe Talk. We're looking to do a staff bike ride through Wampe Talk. We tried to set up a rowing program. We couldn't quite pull it off in August. We'll try again in the spring. And it's really been very successful. We even have a little honor snack basket now right here with healthy snacks at town hall. There's some V8s and some yogurts and we have some healthy Cliff bars and fruit and all in this little honor box. And so, you know, if you don't want a quick snack and if you're here like late on a Tuesday, for example, we grab something there. It's really been very successful. And Maya's been working with us along the way, they're contributing and helping. We actually have seen a reduction in our claims rate and our use rate. I don't know if it can direct, I kind of hope it ties directly back to that. But I do think it's been very successful and Maya was very excited about this. And so it's really been a staff thing and I really, you know, I'm totally behind it. Janet's done a lot of work and Paul's done a lot of work and Jackie and Mary and all the folks on the committee, which are in the press release, by the way. So I just want to thank them.
Thanks to all of you. That's great.
Yeah, we were very, we walked around very proud.
Strutting.
Kevin and I got a picture of the stage. We haven't gotten that back yet. So we'll get that out. We'll put that on, we'll put that on the web.
They had us up on the big screen.
Really?
Oh, my God. I'm really sorry.
You got to head you up there too.
The lunch was delicious, by the way. Moving on, our, the next item on our agenda is the call for town meeting, which of course includes opening the warrant. And as you may recall, we scheduled, internally scheduled, the proposed date at May 2, 2016. So for the Board to call this, I believe we need a motion.
Make a motion. We have a town meeting.
Call for annual town.
Call for annual town meeting, May 2, 2016.
2nd.
All right. I, I think it's only three of us.
I do have questions.
Okay, so further discussion, please go right ahead.
So did we get a list of possible dates? I think we did, maybe a couple. You know, like when the warrant articles.
Oh, yeah, that's, that all happened. So the warrant is technically open anyway.
Okay.
But you're formally opening it tonight. The citizen's petition date, I believe, is the 17th of February, right?
Okay, that's.
I think you had that in a previous packet.
That was a previous packet and that was, and that's been released to the Mariner among other places.
Is that, is that posted on the website?
Yep.
Okay. And one of the things we talked about with respect to the citizens petitions was having Paul Durensis, this town council, come in and have kind of an open.
Yes, exactly. So I propose that we do that either next Tuesday or the Tuesday after, because we're here late anyway. So if, I don't know if there's any preference. I may can do either one. I can work with him on his schedules. I talked to him, I saw him over the weekend, so.
Okay.
We'll have him come in. If anyone wants to consult, it's really more technical. And by the way, so I work with Carol St. Pierre, the town clerk, and we have a model form for people as well. That'll be up on the website this week. If people, it's just, it's modeled on what some other communities have done for citizen's petitions. Makes it easier. So it's a two-page form and it just makes it easier.
And it's available on the website?
Yeah, it'll be available on the website this week.
Phil, I'll have a consultation with our attorney to submit this citizen's petition.
So I leave it be the 2nd of the 9th and I'll let you know, Amanda, it'll put it on the web as well.
Okay. Further discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Town meeting warrant is opened. Town meeting is scheduled for May 2, 2016. Next item is the execution of the presidential primary warrant. Do we actually have the paperwork? All right. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, under William Francis Galvin, Secretary of State of the Commonwealth, has set the date for the presidential primary vote to be the first day of March 2016, hours 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Purpose, of course, is to cast your votes for preferences, either Democrat, Republican, or possibly even an independent now. All right. Our job is just to sign away, so.
Thank you.
And while we're signing that, I will jump ahead and start the hearing by reading the public hearing notice. Cohasset Board of Selectmen, acting as local liquor licensing authority, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 26, 2016, at 7:10 PM or 7:25. In the Selectmen's Office, Town Hall, 41 Highland Avenue, to consider an application for a new liquor license, SRK Enterprises LLC, doing business as Perch 143, located at Eight Stage Coach Way, is applying for a new annual all-alcohol restaurant license. The proposed manager is Michael Hughes. The licensee, the licensed premises will occupy the entire second floor, approximately 2,300 square feet for the restaurant's main dining area, two restrooms, kitchen and a bar. There are exits located at the front and back of the second floor and there is an entrance and exit at the first floor to the vestibule. The public is invited to offer public input on a proposed, in writing in advance of the public hearing or in person at the hearing. All right. The hearing is now open. Is, do we have applicants here from SRK?
We do.
Please step forward. If you would, please introduce yourselves for ourselves and for the audience.
Sean Sullivan, one of the principal owners.
Mr. Sullivan, welcome.
Keith Pfeifer, one of the principal owners.
Keith, welcome as well.
Thank you.
We have, we have a review, or we have a synopsis of your business plan. But if you have the moment, since the public generally doesn't readily get hold of the same packet that we have.
Yeah.
Please take a few minutes to describe what you're planning.
Well, first of all, I just want to thank you for your time and consideration of the application. As way of introduction, my name is Keith Pfeifer. This is Sean Sullivan. I am one of the owners of SRK Enterprises, along with Sean and a gentleman by the name of Ryan Thornton, who's not here. Just to get this out of the way, there is another gentleman, Mike Hughes, who is the liquor license manager applicant. And I received a call from him today. He had a death, a death in his immediate family literally today. So unfortunately, he wasn't, he's unable to be here. So as way of background, I don't know if you're familiar with the property, but my family's owned it since the early 1980s. The barn portion, many, many years ago, had been a restaurant. It went by the name of Green, The Green House at one point, as well as Harrington's. And it was the, both the first and second floor portions that were the restaurant. The second floor portion has remained largely unchanged in terms of its structure since that time. We've had various renters come in and, but it always kind of had a restaurant feel, certainly to me. About a year ago, I approached Sean Sullivan and Ryan Thornton, who are the owners of Crow's Landing in Hingham, because I thought that they did a very good job. But basically, the idea behind the restaurant is it's, it's going to be a community restaurant. It's going to be a healthy place. One of the big things that we're kind of pushing is there's no fry later, meaning there's no, you know, you don't have to worry about grease. But it's also offers a healthy option. And it's really going to be kind of a simple, new American menu. And it's going to be a place for both young and old, for families, for women and men to kind of meet and commune and hopefully be kind of a center place for the village.
Okay. You have questions for the Board?
Operating in current, you have Crow's Landing?
We do, and several other.
And you have Jersey Subs?
We do.
Do you operate the Jersey Subs as well?
We do, yes.
Hours of operation?
We'll be open for dinners Monday through Friday and breakfast through dinner on Saturdays and Sundays.
Okay. Now, what do you, what do you intend for the number of covers that are given this evening? Or how many, how many patrons do you anticipate at capacity?
I think as of right now, we have, I think we're really close to obtaining a permit with the plans. The plans are pretty far along. They're not exact, but I think the idea is 75 to 80.
Okay.
Do you hold a liquor license anywhere else?
Crow's Landing in Hingham.
That's right. So you have one already?
We do.
Okay.
Go ahead. I had a question. Would you, Chris, whoever, but this is essentially for us to approve a liquor license. Do we check, is there any background checks done here or, not that, not that, but I'm just.
By all means. Yes. So anyone who holds a license has to go through a background check. The police do it locally, then the state does it as well. So there's a whole background check.
No, that would be Mr. Hughes or both?
No, it's everything. The ownership too.
So there's a full background check. Now, we would see that.
No, not normally, unless you have a problem.
I mean, we would know about if there was an issue before we did an approval, was what I'm getting at.
Just for the Board to consider, the Board can hear this and any other comment that arises this evening and can opt to continue the hearing until such time that they have an opportunity to talk with Mr. Hughes directly as well and gather any other relevant information necessary. So you're not, you're not under the gun to me.
No, that's what I mean. I just wanted to make sure that that was done before we made a decision. Is that the proper form or?
So we submitted a query request form and although I, my understanding is it's not required of all parties, everybody involved in the ownership as well as the manager for liquor license application, we all submitted personal information forms as well as query request forms at the suggestion of Jennifer.
It seems to me that from a process point of view, I mean. It, it seemed to me that, from a process point of view, I mean, in the long term, but when we get these applications, it should be some kind of a checklist of the, these things have been done. I didn't, I don't see any idea, I'm just.
I, I think, I think you're, um, that may make some sense, uh, but let's, if we may, let's bring that up separately. And we could also bring that up with our, our agents, our enforcement agents, because ultimately, they'd be going through, they'd be the ones that'd be administrating it. Is, uh, is Mr. Hughes intended to be a, the, the, the full-time manager, forty hours a week on premises?
Yep, he'll be the general manager for the operation, yep.
And it's maybe early, but, uh, will you have assistant manager designates?
Absolutely.
Okay, because I mean, the operating hours are going to be greater than forty hours, so. All right, um, go ahead.
No, I just want to know if you have a, a plan for opening, are you hoping to open in April, March?
Our original, um, hope was, it was April.
Mm-hmm.
I think because of just some logistical, um, issues that we've had with, um, the current tendencies, um, it, it'll be a little bit later.
Okay.
But we're, we're as close as getting the perm, um, the permitting here, I think I got an email today about it, um, and so we could be starting to do work as early as next week.
And, and what, what, um, town permits are you seeking, is there a zoning?
There's no zoning, so it's, it's a permitted use.
Uh-huh.
Um, we've had, uh, extensive conversations with Bob Egan.
Okay.
Uh, I have a general contractor, we have a general contractor that we're using, who has been, um, going through the process of, of, um, of helping us determine the, the various, um, construction-type permitting that we need. We had a meeting with the, um, the, the health department, uh, a couple of weeks ago, which I think went well.
Okay.
Um, and we described to them every piece, literally every piece of equipment that we intend to bring onto the premises, and, and, um, and what that will require. Uh, so we've gone through that process, and we've had a number of informal conversations with Bob, Bob Egan, just trying to anticipate the kinds of things that will, that could arise, that would prevent us from being able to operate, and to date, we certainly haven't come across anything.
Right.
Um, but, um, that's kind of where it stands.
One, one question I have, which is something that, that we as a town have talked about and have to continue to keep talking about, and probably bring our, bring the study off the shelf, is parking. I don't know if, if there's, um, you know, any kind of requirements for businesses to, we have a public, we have a, you know, a town parking lot right behind the building, as you know, and, um, it is, um, arguably, u- used quite a bit, and, you know, we have to, as a town, we have to talk about how we can do a better job keeping that parking lot going, and I don't know that there's any.
As I understand it.
Any movement on them to provide it, but.
No, the Village Business District by law allows the lot to be used for parking for any business down there.
Right.
And so, um.
There's, there, it, it is, it's, it's a worthwhile conversation, but since the application is here, uh, in front of us now, uh, uh, and I, I recognize from your write-up that you're Hingham residents.
Yep.
You know from the downtown, the square area in Hingham, how difficult parking can be.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and there's a sensitivity to it, and I'm just, I'm letting you know now, the very same thing applies. I, personally, I believe that the vitality of our, our village will depend a great deal upon, uh, businesses that encourage frequency of visit. All right, um, and yours certainly would, would fit that, uh, that mold. Having said that, the, the, the drawback that comes with that typically is that to get there, uh, people will travel by car, and they'll be looking for a place to park. And a good neighbor policy is always one to keep in mind, I don't intend to make it a lecture, and it's kind of come out that way in any case. I, I would encourage you to coach each and every one of your employees to recognize that, uh, you know, their convenience for parking is secondary to your, your customers, because each and every business around you is looking at the same thing. And there is an ebb and flow in that parking lot, um, and in the spaces around it. Uh, it, just a couple of doors down, you have a, you know, you have a thriving medical practice, but at the, at the same time, on the other side, you have businesses that operate both, uh, you know, at full tilt during the day and in the evening, so just, please.
Appreciate that.
Be cognizant.
So, uh, obviously, um, I'm, I'm aware of the issue, and I'm, obviously, I can't say that we can, we can solve it all ourselves, but I think one of the things that.
If you can, drop the businesses.
One of the things, one of the things that we, I mean, that's clearly something that we looked at when we were kind of modeling our business plan, and one of the reasons that we made the decision, um, not to be open at night was because, I mean, I, certainly my anecdotal experience, um, as well as what I understand from others, is that a lot of the problems is the weekday daytime issue. And our, you know, really, our big times are Friday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday night. We decided not to do lunch during the week, you know, in large part because of, um, we wanted to be sensitive to that issue. Um, so it's certainly something that we have been thinking about in terms of our business plan.
We, we would, we would very much like to be able to, to say to you and any other potential, um, um, business applicant that parking's not an issue, and please, you know, stay open as much as you like, we'd like to have you do that anyway.
Mm-hmm.
The parking will, will become an issue, and it's, it is a, a topic that we've grappled with and have not resolved. So, I appreciate your, your understanding of it. Uh, does the, does the board have additional questions at the moment?
We, just a couple quick questions. Is the restaurant and liquor licenses, is there any limit to the number that we have in the town, I know there is a full.
For, for, for restaurants, no, not to my knowledge.
You could have any number that were applied that would be brutal.
Uh, it's, it's for, it's the sale for consumption off premises, there's limits on that.
Yeah, the liquor store type thing. And Mr. Hughes, you said he, he has approved, holds a liquor license in Hingham? Is approved?
He's, he's currently our manager in Hingham, he'll be moving over to Cohasset, he doesn't hold, he doesn't hold the.
Has he, he's going to give you a license holder here, right?
Yes.
Has he ever held a license before?
No. But he does have substantial operational, um, experience.
What's the board's pleasure?
Hear from the public?
Uh, what, no, that's, yes, of course, but I mean, with respect to, um, Mr. Hughes, the proposed manager.
Well, my feeling is this looks, this looks pretty good and so well, but I'd like to have a further comfort level that there's been checking on these things, you know, that's, you know, I'd like to have, I guess it'd be Chris say that, you know, the police department's done its curries, and, you know, get some assurance that this thing has been, we need, as a ward, you get those kinds of assurances, I, I wish there was some kind of, it was done, you develop a checklist for, just give it to us as, as well. I think if we're going to grant a liquor license, we probably should meet Mr. Hughes.
Okay.
Those two things.
Uh, it looks favorable to me. Do you have anything else, because I, I will call for public comment at the moment.
No, it's fine.
Okay, is there, is there comment from the audience, or from the public?
Yes.
Um, if you would, please stand and, and introduce yourselves.
I'm Alia Monaco, and this is Jen Warshaw, and, um, we are part co-chairmans of the Chamber of Commerce. And we sent you a letter, I don't know if you received it, email, it's an email.
When did you send it, do you know?
Today.
It's not in a package, right?
No, it's shown this afternoon.
Okay, we're going to look at.
Okay, so basically, um, we're very interested in a restaurant, it's not that we're objecting to it, but there have been some concerns from businesses and res- residences. Uh, number one was the parking, um, the other, um, concern was, um, dumpsters, the location of the dumpsters. Um, we understand that the abutters have not agreed to a location. Um, it is recommended that it not be on the property line per Board of Health regulations. Um, having the restaurant on the second floor, abuts to the residential apartments, uh, nine and fifteen depot. So how will that mitigate sound and light and pollution after ten PM? And the next big issue was deliveries, because right now, the deliveries that are going on in town are impossible. And places like Chatham, they usually have deliveries made prior to businesses being open, so it's usually made at eight AM or something like that. Could something like that be done? I have some copies here, though.
Uh, it's, it's worthwhile for the board to take that information in, our memories are not what they used to be. Thank you. Um, if, if I may ask you to do this, please share that with the applicants as well. Um, I, I, I don't anticipate that, uh, you, either one of you, Sean or Keith, would have immediate answers to these, and that we don't expect. However, um, I would ask you to give it some consideration as well.
Yep.
Specifically, uh, it, it just has risen in the past. Please advise the, the board, the licensing authority, uh, with respect to, to your plan for noise mitigation. Now, mind you, that's typically a planning board item, but it can be a stipulated item with respect to issuing a liquor license. And I only bring it forward because we have, um, another business in town that has caused, I shouldn't say has caused, but has been complained against on a number of occasions, uh, with respective noise violations, uh, and it's a, you know, it's from an abutting residence. So, I just want to make sure that that's something considered and can address.
Yep.
Um, we have, there's very little that this board can say with respect to location of dumpsters, that's really a, an item to be addressed by Board of Health and possibly Planning Board, okay? And, uh, finally, with respect to deliveries, um, I, again, I, I simply ask that you give some consideration to input with, with that. Although I'd, I'd also gently point out to, um, any business owner that the, the very same requests that are being made of an applicant would also be turned around and made of that business owner. Because ultimately, it's, it's simply the coordination between each of you, which will keep that, keep the parking way relatively free to make deliveries in a, in a timely and, uh, and effective fashion, so. All right. Yes, I know.
What, what other boards have looked at this, has this been approved by any of the boards?
Uh, this is, as, as I, I believe this is pretty much an as-of-right use, so the only place it really has to go, besides the more health, because that has to give a food permit, and we actually, you're going to have to come look for a common vicsuals permit as well before you open to this board. Mm-hmm. Um, but, um, uh, the Board of Health would have to approve all the kitchen equipment, and the dumpsters, and, and sanitary issues. Otherwise, it's just a billing permit, i- if they're an as-of-right use, uh, as long as they fit within the code.
There's no issue with the planning board, they don't need to go before the planning.
If it's an as-of-right use, they would, you know, if it's a special use, yes.
Really, what we're, what we're focused on is granting a liquor license or not, these other boards are going to have to look at it anyways, that's what I was getting at, I guess.
No, nobody actually has to look at it, uh, except for the Board of Health, really, that's really the health agent for those board, you know. Uh, if it's, as an as-of-right use, it's automatic, that's, that's the theory.
Is there further public comment? Please step forward.
Hi, Kelly Lynch, I own Balance Studio.
Hi, Kelly.
So I'm excited about the restaurant, I think it's great, you know, for the Village Vitalian, what have you, but parking is desperately an issue. And I'm not sure where we take this to the next step, and if it's not, you guys, and related to the liquor license, where is the next step? Because we put in some two-hour parking out inside of your building, which has been great, but there's a lot of residents in town that park in those first few lots, and a lot of businesses that park in the first few lots, and they're there for eight hours a day, and sometimes longer, sometimes it's overnight parking. And what happens is, there's no place to be, so when my business is at its peak hours, at nine thirty, we've got the community center, Julie's is getting all their drop-offs for their supplies, people are coming in and out of the art center, in and out of the studio, and it's bedlam. And so I've got clients circling the block, who cannot even get into their appointments because of the parking issue. So I guess my question to the board is, where do we go to have additional spots relegated to, to our parking, or one-hour parking? Is that something that we address with you, or through the planning board, or what?
Um, it actually does rest here, uh, the parking regulation is, uh, is administered by the board. And we have actually conducted a study, that was completed at about this time last year, if I remember correctly. And the study was relatively inconclusive with respect to long-term parking in the main lot, which is to say that their, their review, the, uh, the consultant's review of activity didn't show day-long parking. There was, there was plenty of extended use, but there wasn't any day-long parking. Having said that, the board also didn't do, uh, didn't take any action, uh, with respect to segregated parking, time limitation, uh, fees, or any such thing. And it may actually come to the point now, that the blessing is that we actually have businesses that want to, want to locate here. And for so long, we've, we've been seeking that, uh, out of the village. And, uh, I, I hate to, to say this, uh, because free parking, you know, for a long time, has only existed on a monopoly board, and in the town of Cohasset, uh, but it may be coming to the point how, where we have to put in time restrictions, or, um, or, or, or other things that encourage rotation as well, we may also be looking at, uh, we may, we may want to pull a consultant back in to advise us on traffic flow and delivery drop areas and things like that.
Yeah, I, I was kind of alluding to that earlier, you know, I think it's time that we take that, we haven't formally had a meeting with that study, but I think we should, and.
Well, it's actually perfectly timed anyway, the master plan is starting, right?
Yep.
And that's a fundamental issue in the Village Business District, on what to do, and this supports long-term vitality, so.
Right.
This is actually a perfect question now, to be having as part of that analysis.
I spent a lot of time at MMA, getting information on parking meters and parking lot scaping and things like that, that can increase everything. So it's for a future agenda, sorry to hold up your time, it's not your problem, but it is, it is a problem in town, clearly, and, um, and I, I appreciate what you've done to not have daytime hours, because that, that will, that will alleviate a lot of problems, but there's, Friday nights are still bad.
Yeah, see, it's dicey, and for someone who's in that parking lot every morning at seven, there's a lot of cars there at seven o'clock, and they're still there at the end of the day. So, there's quite a bit of long-term parking, so even if, you know, I'm not even saying that we want to go towards metered parking, and that's something that will be studied, but even if, whether it's short time to put in some two-hour parking limits, or one-hour parking signs, be the first ten spots in the center aisle, to keep that for more transient clients and customers to downtown.
Okay, um, thank you. All right, Chris, the agenda here.
Yep.
Can I just make a quick comment on the, uh, parking issue? Hi, Jennifer Meckler, I promised I wouldn't speak, but, I mean, um, I own Five South Main, and parking is a nightmare. So I have spent probably three hours on the phone this week with the police chief, in regards to this. Um, last Friday, we had nine tractor-trailers backed up, all at the same time, blocking Kelly, blocking me. I have a driveway that I lease from my landlord, which I can fit three cars. My staff now refuses to pay to park in it, because they can't get out, because everybody from Julie's, or the yoga, or the community center have just blocked us in, and people want to leave, we can't get people to leave. We, you know, we're taxing the police department with this issue, I know you guys said we did a study, but I don't think anybody can look anybody in the face and say it was a well-done study, you know, it was.
Well, frankly, we, we didn't even really review the study results, so.
Because, you know, I come, so I get here at five o'clock in the morning, there's probably twenty cars in the parking lot at five AM. And when I leave at six-thirty or seven o'clock at night, there's a whole lot more than that, but a lot of them haven't moved. And a lot are still commuting up to the train, because it's free parking. My staff has now taken to parking in this parking lot for the Town Hall, which at some point will get ugly, but there is nowhere else to park. It's, it's gotten incredibly ugly. So just so you guys know what you're coming into, it's a heated discussion in the village, all the businesses want to work together, we all try to work together. It doesn't always work, there's a lot of screaming that goes on, and there's a lot of police calling that goes on, and, um.
Not gunplay yet.
Not gunplay yet, but, you know.
What about the parking lot across the street, down, does that alleviate, there seems to be a number of spaces there.
There are, but have you been to that parking lot lately?
Is it, is there a camper still there?
It's smaller than that.
It's not, not a camper, but there is more debris there than I've ever seen in my life, and I made three employees park over there, and all three got flat tires.
Well, that's.
And the DPW has been told, and we were told to call the highway department, because nobody cared.
Well, cleaning that up should be pretty.
So, um, it's a good opportunity to.
That might rain or screen that, wasn't it?
And the other problem too is lighting, there's no lighting back there.
Right.
Nobody, you know, my mom who works, she's seventy-three, she doesn't want to park in the back lot and walk. And also on your note, all of the village parking is supposed to be one hour, all of it. It doesn't happen, and the police have now promised that they will start ticketing again.
Yeah, I thought they were, the last time we discussed this, they were going to take some kind of measures to present, prevent that all-day parking, but obviously, something hasn't occurred.
It's just, yeah.
But there also has to be alleviation for the people that are working in the areas. I mean, if I'm working at the shop or...
So between myself and Mr. Dooley's, on shift at each, on each day, we average fourteen to sixteen employees just in the two businesses. That's fourteen to sixteen cars just with us two. You know, and then you get Peel Pizza, who's got three. Then you've got the insurance company who's got them. You start adding this up, we're looking at probably a hundred and fifty cars was my quick estimate of what are just employees. So you start adding that, then you add that daycare, which is a monumental problem.
You're talking about the community center?
Yeah, and now we're overrun.
I, if I may.
Yeah.
Jen, I appreciate your comments and Kelly's as well with respect to parking. And please understand that we hear, we hear your concern, your concerns, we hear the problem clearly. It's a separate item and distinct from the application for a liquor license, although it is impactful. But if we are to continue to support a thriving village, it's a separate and distinct issue for the board to address. And we've got it. Time to move on that. I think Chris has already got it noted for, you know, for an agenda item. And that simply means, once it makes the agenda, there's an action that will be taken. I have no idea what the action will be, but there's an action that will be taken. Can I, if I may, ask the board to return to the consideration of the permit application in front of us? And one final call for public comment on this. Is there, is there any further public comment? All right. Seeing that there is, there is none, may I ask of the board what your pleasure is with respect to action on this application?
I had another question, too, was the criteria, is it laid out here? What criteria we to be using to look at this sort of a thing, to look at a license like this? I know I've only considered, you know, the stores, we sort of had a list of criteria. Do we, does that exist in the regulations somewhere? We should at least know what our criteria is, or so, you know, it may not be appropriate at all to be looking, you know, at some of these items, or it may be appropriate.
There is, I mean, there is criteria, but it primarily rests with management and ownership. You certainly want to look at the background, but that, even a lack of background with respect to operation is not necessarily a black mark. And with respect to management, there are certain items that we are really concerned about, like tip certification and hours on-site and the like. After that, it's really at our discretion as to what we seek.
You know, for myself, I'd like to see in writing what roughly our criteria is we're supposed to be applying generally to something like this, just so we have some kind of, some kind of skeleton here to work with.
There's, it occurs to me Kevin was not in our training session.
Training, correct, yeah.
If you have a spare book, or if you still have a spare book, it's worth while. So I take it, Kevin, you're not prepared to act at the moment?
Well, not, I don't think so. A couple of things, one, I think, I think the applicant should have an opportunity to address these. They should, I'd like to see him come back with an adjustment as to what these concerns are, so we can have the dialogue.
Yeah.
I also like to see Mr. Hughes, if we're going to issue a liquor license, so.
Yeah. I just want to be clear about, these are particular neighbor-to-neighbor issues, and I don't know that, I mean, I think, I don't know that we should hold up, you know, a liquor license over, you know, clarification of where dumpsters are located.
That may be, but I want to, I'd like to see that in the criteria, though, that, so we're not supposed to address this, just so we do this sort of professionally, that's all I'm concerned about.
Okay, I do, I, you know, given the fact that the most important part of a liquor license is the manager on record. So I, you know, I would like to, I would propose that we can continue the hearing so that he can come in. You know, I know part of the criteria for a manager is they have to be a US citizen, and there are, there are some...
There must be the Cory check we want to hear. There must be a checklist of things that we can be assured have been done, and what's the result of that report? I'd like to see that on Mr. Hughes, as well as meet Mr. Hughes.
Yep. There are, and you probably already noticed, but in case you didn't, there are the state requirements and the, and the application has, so we list, we list off everything in the application that the state has in terms of requirements. And, you know, in terms of citizenship, all of, I can just assure you that all of, all of the, the application requirements that we understand there to be have been addressed.
That's, I think that's probably true, but again, I want to see that presented to us in that form. Like, here's the criteria that's been reviewed, as opposed to it being immaterial. I'm sure it is. I just want to organize professionally.
And I think that's something that you're looking for from this office.
Yes.
To just advise us yesterday. This is not for you.
So when we consider Mr. Hughes and the application, we have in front of us, these nine things have been checked off. And these are the nine things that should be checked off. That's all I'm saying.
Keith, you're, this is, it's a process conversation internally for the board, as opposed to something that you either did not bring forward. I, just as a final wrap-up with the application, first of all, I wish you success with the application itself. And, you know, assuming that it's successful, then, you know, with the opening and the like. You've heard from the public here this evening already that there are some, there are concerns, which, by the way, are making, not yours. Nonetheless, there are concerns that will have an effect upon your relationships with your business neighbors. Likewise, there are some additional concerns with respect to, you know, the adjacency of the restaurant with living units. So these items, I'd encourage you to address to the extent that you can. Because as the licensing authority, we do have a fairly broad scope as to requesting stipulations on the, you know, on the license. For all of that, I'll ask the board in a moment, but it sounds to me like the board is going to ask for continuation. And I don't think there's any reason to continue this further than our next meeting, if Mr. Hughes will be available for that.
Thank you.
And we understand that, you know, he's got personal matters to address, and so couldn't be here to see. That's all I have to say. If the board is ready to act on a motion, I'd love to hear a motion.
Can you move that we continue this hearing? Do we need, we need to set a specific date, don't we? Obviously, it's a meeting to our next meeting, which is dated?
February ninth.
February ninth?
Two thousand sixteen.
This year.
And we need a time. At seven-ten?
Seven-ten. Thank you.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
I see, I'll see you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right.
Can I just bring up one little thing for the public? Just as an aside, when there is debris in a parking lot and things like that, that's a great opportunity to use the app C Click Fix, which we did a, I mentioned it to everybody. A program, good. I just want to, I mentioned it to somebody else that called me this morning about something.
I'm kind of big mouth in the town.
Good. You and me both.
All right, next item on the agenda is the change of DBA designation from TNA Restaurant Group LLC to the Blue Muscle Tavern. Okay, this was, I did get that right, didn't I?
Yep.
This is an applicant for a liquor license at the old location of the Great Emperor, on three A.
So my understanding is, we already granted a liquor license?
We already granted that.
It's not a DBA.
This is just a change in name, which we need to sort of approve, is that it?
Does the board have any questions with respect to the action? Perfect, okay. In that case, just to formalize it.
I make a motion that we approve the change, the DBA name for liquor license, previously known as the tied to Blue Muscle Tavern.
Second.
Second, sorry.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. That's done. The next item on the agenda, zoning board of appeals, consideration of associate member for appointment. Do we have anybody here from the ZBA?
Yeah.
All right.
Benjamin Lacy, a member of the board. And this is Matthew Watkins, who is a candidate to join the board.
Mr. Watkins, welcome.
Welcome.
Good evening.
You've been sitting here for a while, and you can still say it.
I was just gonna say, I had his application since last February, right?
Correct, yeah.
Mr. Lacy, just for, I'm sorry. Would you mind terribly just giving a brief synopsis of your, you know, your application and your interest in the position? Just for the audience broadly?
Yes, so my name is Matt Watkins. I live at eighty-three Fair Oaks Lane. I've lived in town for close to three years. And as Selectman Kennedy mentioned, about a year ago, I put forward my application for the ZBA. And I did so because I have an interest in, you know, town government, and I'm looking to become more involved with the town. And I view this as a good opportunity to, you know, contribute on a strong board that, you know, helps to protect the charm and character of our town. And, you know, I appreciate your consideration of the application. My, my background is different than a lot of folks on the board. I'm a public relations, I own a PR firm. But in doing so, I've had the opportunity to interface with a lot of town government boards, including zoning boards and planning boards and select boards. And, you know, I find the issues of the day that the zoning board has in front of them both challenging and appealing and interesting to me. So I view it as a good opportunity for me to, to join a strong board.
All right. Have you, have you had the opportunity to serve on any kind of committee in the past, whether it's a discount or another?
No.
Don't let him in on any of the requirements, all right? Until he says yes.
May I say that Charlie Higginson and I met with Mr. Watkins and had a good discussion. And then he came and met the whole board, and he's attended our meetings. I think he's very well com, very well...
Qualified?
Qualified. He's delightfully young. He'll bring the Aborigines to the board down about twenty years. We have a vacancy. We have had a vacancy for about four months now, I guess. And we work our boards fairly hard, and we need the help. So I very much would like to say that the whole board is in favor of his application.
Okay.
That's terrific.
You, you do recognize, of course, that this, you get to entertain a number of angry folks.
Right.
You know, for like the evening commentary.
Yes, so part of what my company does as a PR firm is, we actually do a lot of what's called public outreach and community relations. And so we go into a lot of cities and towns with utility companies. You know, oftentimes controversial projects. And, you know, we, we work to help, you know, find a sensible common ground. And so I do see some, some similarities. And I've also, my demeanor and kind of composure is one that is used to that type of environment. So in the meetings that I've sat in, I've been exposed to, you know, some interesting topics, you know, in addition to the, to the, you know, the more snoozy ones. I think that that blend of, of the two is appealing to me.
Well, I have to tell you that I, the board, I think I'm certain I speak for my two colleagues and one who's absent for this evening, thoroughly appreciates folks who step forward, especially those who are, who are new to service. And we welcome you, and we hope you're not scared away too quickly. Thank you for bringing down the average age, because there are those of us who are on the north side of that age who really appreciate it generally. And I think we're, the board, if, if I may ask you to...
You want me to make a motion?
Well, do you have comments first, or do you have questions?
No.
Then please, let's move ahead.
I move that we appoint Matthew Watkins, can, do we have the term to the zoning board of appeals?
With the remaining term.
For the remainder of the term of genocidal, through, do we have a date?
June thirtieth is the appointments, right?
Right, is it this year, though?
Yeah.
Okay, through June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
Actually, no, let me check that.
Okay, sorry, it's a quick...
We could just say the remainder of the term anyways.
The remainder of the, the unexpired term of genocidal. Okay, okay, and that'll, and then you can take care of it on the paperwork, okay, with the clerk.
One second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Matthew, for allowing the hearing.
Appreciate it.
I'm kind of jealous. I love ZBA. I really do. I think it's a great, really interesting conversations.
Without a doubt, you have a lot in front of you. And that's, and I mean, I mean that in a very positive way. You have the potential to make a, you know, a very substantial impact on the town.
And great colleagues. That's a great board.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Chris.
Have a good night.
Yes, I did speak to Jennifer.
I have to swear. Actually, what, Matthew, if I may, just as a one eye, a final eye. There is, there is actually a handbook for committee members that has been put together by the town clerk.
Here's it out.
Perfect, and she'll, she'll also give you a website address for state mandated ethics online testing. Okay. And it's something we try to keep up on, it gets done quickly. You might be thinking that it's not a really big deal, but after all, it is. So, anyway, welcome aboard.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item up is the six-month financial update, which Chris had sent out to us yesterday.
I sent out my memo, but you had all the other materials last week, so. Just my cover memo was late. The data was prompt. So you all have in front of you the six-month updates, and we have a little memo. We have the charts as well, so the general highlight, overall highlight is that we're okay. Things are good. General fund is moving along well. The sewer fund is stable. There are some bumps here and there in specific places, but you look at the overall, we're good. So, and I did drill down fairly deeply to ask what was, what and why on some of these, so I have answers that I'm comfortable with, so. The utilities, big issue, electricity's up a little bit, gas oil is down, so we're flat. Police and fire overtime so far this year have been flat. Our, we don't really see the big intake in excise tax in the spring, but, you know, that's, that's where it is. Our licenses and permits continue to run strong. It's really mostly permanent fees. Building permits hit a record last year, five hundred plus during calendar year 2015. And that's not just new homes, it's remodels and all kinds of things. But it remains fairly active. The economy is still strong, and people are still doing a lot of renovation work. The, the overall trends on our other revenue is fine. Our cash flow is good. And, you know, as we enter the planning for next year, or actually soon to be the deliberation on next year's budgets, I think we're in pretty good shape, most certainly on the town side. Though I know there'll be some conversation on the school side as we go forward, so.
The, the only question that left forward for me is the, you know, why the decline in sewer revenue? Doesn't make a lot of sense.
Yeah, no, I looked at that, too. And, well, water is actually, if you drill down, and I went, I looked at the usage figures, which you, I don't, we didn't, I didn't share that level of detail. I didn't share that level of detail. Water usage and sewer usage was actually up in the first quarter and down slightly in the second quarter. But water was up more, but when you looked at the delta, I think it's irrigation. And I haven't been able to drill all the way down into that. But a lot of people have dual meters. You have your home meter and your irrigation meter. The summer numbers were up a bunch and not as, up as much for water, not as much for sewer. And I don't, I have to get from the water pump at that next drill down level. I don't have that here. We don't, we don't get that level here. I'm, I'm believing that it's second meters. It just looks logically that it's second meters. Because when usage fell, it, it's kind of matched for water and sewer. So I, I think that, that in the second quarter. So I, I do think a fair amount of that was, it was summer irrigation and spring irrigation. Because we did have a fairly, fairly dry spring and summer. And when we had rain, it was very collective, which was great for us. It filled the reservoir. But people's lawns and trees and trubs need kind of more regular irrigation than they're getting. So that's what it seems to be. There's also some like little spotty, spotty revenue, odd revenue sources that are off in sewer right now. You know, there's not, there's been very few additional connections, but that's, that's just the nature of the fact. They're pretty much built out at the moment.
But that, for example, that connection, that connection fee number is-
Is down.
Way, way off.
Yeah.
Way, 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 way.
Yeah, but it's still a comparatively minor part of their, of their overall revenues, so.
True.
And they did end last year with a fairly substantial surplus. It was seven hundred thousand dollars. So their, their budget was built with a cushion intact. And for some reason, I don't entirely understand, there's a lot of lag on sewer. That happened two years ago. It was like this wave of, I don't know, people just don't like to pay their sewer bills and they sit on them and sit on them and pay them at the end. I, I-
But they're the same as the water bill, right?
Now, another thing that's happened, and Mary did point this out to me and I did, I did see the evidence of it. We have much less receiv- are we driven the receivables down dramatically over the last few years.
Right.
So the benefit that happened every year of people paying from prior years because of tax collection, that's going away.
Well, right, so if, if, if we're, if we're looking at comparative revenue over the same period from fiscal fifteen, I guess the, the logical question then is, did we get an inflation bump from, in fifteen from past due payments?
And there was a bit of that in, in sewer. At the same time, their, their expenses are stable or la- or lower. So they're, they're, they're fine to be on budget. It appears they'll be fine on budget. They're, they're, I, I, there are, I, I, there is a little oddity to it. I'll, I'll grant you. It just seems-
Yeah, well, it's, the, the question arises, and we've, we've talked about this in the past. Expectations in essential services are for a predictable baseline. It's not, not as if people are, you know, adding toilets or subtracting them from their house that would, would cause a variability of, of use, right? And certainly not at a nine percent level. And likewise, you know, your, your daily activities interacting with water don't necessarily drive usage to a high level or a lower level. It's relatively stable. And so when you see that kind of variance, it causes a question. And then normally what that means is either we're having trouble actually booking the receipts or there's something else that's taken place in the past that's not well explained, like a, you know, a, an abnormally large collection of a past due receivable. So that's why I'm asking the question.
There was a, there was an odd, you can even see it on the chart here. It was an odd lack of decrease. I mean, you know, there's a spike and a drop and a spike and a drop because bills four times a year. The last year's drop didn't happen as much in sewer. And I, and I, and I, it had to have been a specific event. I mean, it should have, it should follow a cycle and up and down and up and down because that's how the bills work. And again, water did raise their fees. Sewer has not raised its rates in seven years. So there's a little bit of that. And they've also, well, I think that filtration should have made a big difference, but they've done a lot of good work on infiltration, so they've been reducing that flow of the plant. They are doing a few things that are attached to, that's gonna affect their positively, they're not aligned. They've been able, they're implementing a diversion of some of their with coacid into the main plant, which is gonna save some money. And again, the ongoing work with the, with the infiltration is, is cutting non-sewer that's in, you know, one that's infiltrating the pipes, it's dropping. So it's, it's cutting some of their expenses and processes, so. But I'm, I'm still asking the question. And I talked to the chairman. He goes, we're fine. So he seems to be perfectly okay. He lives this stuff more than I do. So I'm still watching it, but, you know, they're seeming to be okay.
Thank you.
All right. I think we're gonna move to the screen, so I should, you should be here.
Okay.
Do you have any further comment on the six-month update?
No, again, it was, it was pretty, it was pretty stable. I mean, you know, I, I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, we'll see a, a spike in excise tax this year that everyone's talking about. Everyone's buying their, their new SUVs. So maybe they're buying less Teslas and more Maseratis this year. Who knows? But-
Not coming from my house.
But, I mean, they, last year was a, was a near record or record car sales year in Massachusetts. I've seen some big numbers. So I don't want to scare anybody. I didn't put this in here, by the way. One of the programs I sat through had to do with, it was at the Maya Lunch. And Kevin and I were there. We talked, it was a program on electric, on self, what are they called? Self-driving vehicles? And, you know, one of the things I'd never thought about with, when you think about speed and safety and all that, people will use, will need, they say, less cars because the cars will be multitasking. They'll drop you at work. They'll go pick up your wife at work or they'll pick up your kids and they'll, you know. And, and I said to myself, well, I, I'm a skeptic to think that we're gonna have less cars. But, but there's a possibility we will have less cars. And that could mean less excise tax, for example, less motor vehicle fees and all that.
Interestingly enough, if you look at the penetration of automobiles by, by age cohort, you already have fewer cars in the world. The younger generation is delaying the purchase of a car longer and they're buying fewer of them per household. And part of that is just the way that that gener- the generation is living. They're typically living in cities, taking public transportation more actively. Interestingly enough, the average car spends five percent of its total time in life being used. Five percent. So when you think about it, and you think about the, you know, utility, I buy into that. It might be, it might be a twenty-year event.
Right, well, that's what we, I think that's, right, it was, they were talking about a twenty-year window here. I'm not paddicking for a budget for next year, but-
It wouldn't, it wouldn't impact the budget for next year, but that was a, that was an impactful, high-opening presentation. And they actually, they were saying exactly what Steve was saying, you know, and actually a lot more. So that the number, they're projecting that because of the use of driverless vehicles, that this technology is going so fast that you may see a twenty or thirty percent reduction in vehicles in the next five years. So, and, and actually, if my memory is correct, they were presenting that to us. Both Chris and I were sitting there looking at each other.
We're gonna have to raise excise rates.
If I didn't have a witness to what we heard, but it really was a significant decrease. But it also impacts your parking, your vehicles and so forth and so on. But it's, it's gonna, and it's coming upon us, it's going, coming upon us very quickly. And we're talking the next, within the next five years. At least they were talking about twenty, twenty-five percent reduction in the number of vehicles. And this, this technology is moving on rapidly.
But again, in the short term, we're fine. But, and again, so we were also at economic development. You know, we're not gonna get, we're not gonna land the GE's, I was saying the other day to folks. But we're gonna land their executives. They're gonna come to a place like coacid. So, you know, you know, this is where you come to, after you've made it and raised your kids and you just wanna settle down. So, and you can't not have a car in coacid. You wanna get anywhere, really. That's just a reality in the suburbs still today. So I don't think that, I think the cities will see that, that, I mean, I got, yeah. I have friends in Brookline who went down to one car because they can have a zip card. They can have their kid grab a zip card if they need to go to hockey practice or something, you know. There's ways of getting around that that we can't do out here. We will eventually. I do think it's gonna penetrate eventually. Yeah, Uber, Lyft, GM felt, what Lyft, isn't that what they say?
General Moore's invested recently five hundred million dollars in Lyft. And it's just because they're looking at the future and seeing this is coming and they wanna be part of it.
So back on the track of the todays, fascinating stuff, and we're definitely gonna fall upon it. But we're good. I, I, at the moment, we're good. And so if anyone has any specific questions, feel free to ask or shoot me an email.
Okay. We are at the seven fifty-five point, well behind our, our timeframe. We have two policy, you know, we have a policy update with respect to the Affordable Care Act to take on. And then I, I understand you wanna introduce a discussion point with respect to reserve policies.
So why don't we start with the ACA, because that's totally different and unique and Paul can explain one of the here.
I actually have a slight change to it too, because I, there's some long dates in here. What this is, is the Affordable Care Act. Now, we have to send out information to employees, full-time employees. And the, with the Affordable Care Act, the definition is a little bit different than what we use and what we are required to use from Massachusetts, which is twenty-plus hours. For, for these purposes, it is to average thirty hours. So you, we have a choice about how we can decide what that is. We can look each month. So if you work thirty hour, thirty hours a week for a month, you're a full-time employee and you need to be offered health insurance for that particular month, which is generally not recommended. The recommended approach is to go by an average over the course of a year. To look at if you average thirty hours per week over a full twelve-month period, well then, even if you didn't necessarily plan on being a full-time employee, if, if we didn't anticipate it. And you'll find that to, maybe substitute teachers, police detail, you might pick up a lot of details. And, and then, son of a gun, here at the end of the year, you should have been classified as full-time. And what you do is you offer insurance the following year in that place.
What do they do in a year? Then they don't, they go without a job?
Yeah, well, because you would typically be hired as a part-time person.
Right.
But maybe if you pick up extra hours or maybe you work the desk or some other things come up and you end up working a lot of over, a lot of special detail or as a substitute teacher, you may not expect to work more than thirty hours, but you could.
You're proposing that we wait a year to take a look to see if they average to thirty hours?
Well, you have to figure out, they, they give you ways to, to look at that. You can look by month.
Right.
And then you'd be offering people insurance and then, not, and, and that's a mess. So you, you, you pick a, a twelve-month period to say, okay, look, if we hire you as part-time, but if it turns out at the end of twelve, the, the year, you've, you've really been a full-time employee, we need to make good on that and basically offer you insurance the following year.
So say, so you're, you're waiting a year to make that, you make a year to make that.
Exactly, exactly.
Now, the, the state law right now is twenty, twenty hours.
Twenty plus for Massachusetts. So we're offering insurance to the majority of people that this is going to apply to. It's, it's those folks that we don't anticipate, but it turns out that we do.
But the, so the Affordable Care Act raises that another ten hours?
No, no, it doesn't. We're still down in Massachusetts law.
We still have to follow, we still offer it to people who we expect to work twenty-plus hours.
And what's the look-back period for that?
There is none.
So you mean, when you hire somebody, if you think they're gonna, if you think, or reasonably think, I can imagine how this law reads. If you reasonably think that they're gonna be working on their schedule for twenty hours or more, they're gonna be afforded health insurance, right?
Right. Regularly scheduled. It, it's, it's also regularly scheduled. So if your, if your hours are twenty-plus or more, we-
So if they're, if in Massachusetts it's really essentially stricter, why would we bother, why do we have to have a policy?
But the law requires, because we have. This is ACA and this is the first year we're kind of working into this. And we're, this is the first year we have to do the reporting. We're reporting to the IRS. We're reporting to the employees.
When you say the IRS, we will follow the Affordable Care Act and here's the policy and so forth. Reality is, what you just said, we're, we're doing something a lot more because we're in Massachusetts. They're getting this is, so we're essentially, you're talking about a bureaucratic paperwork thing sort of our, our-
To a large extent. There can be some who are not regularly scheduled for twenty or more hours, but end up working thirty or more hours. So there's, there's a-
We're gonna capture that.
Handful of people at most. But this is, is new. We're starting to, to look at this. We're modifying the payroll system in order to address it. This is the first time we're doing any of the reporting. And the paperwork I have for you, the, the month that, the months that we picked to actually implement this is slightly different from the paperwork that was sent to you. We chose November first through October, so we backed it two months. Because what that does is it gives us a two-month window to actually look and say, oh geez, these two people should have been offered health insurance. So we're gonna offer it to them in January. We can get them the paperwork. They can look at the paperwork and say, okay, yes, I want insurance. This is the one I want. Get them signed up in a timely fashion rather than wait until December. This is what was recommended by our payroll vendor, who's been working really well with us and, and really helping us make this happen. So that's what we, we're, we're looking to do. We've got it all kind of set up to, to do that. And I apologize, this, this is kind of late in the game to be showing you this, but this is our first time and we're trying to do what's right.
And this policy, this called look-back policy, which is what you're describing, conforms us to the Affordable Care, Care Act. Is that sort of a way of phrasing what you're saying, Chris?
Yes. This is the way that we think is the best to do this. And what it'll also do is we can get the paperwork out with the W twos and save on postage to the extent possible, so.
Is this a fairly standard policy? Have you checked this with other towns? Like, do you do that, do you pinch back?
Yeah, yeah, the, the, this has all been-
This is pretty much what other towns have said they're doing.
Vetted through other ways, yeah. I mean, some will vary. They're all doing the look-back that I know of. They may vary on some of the months, but I think this is the, is the way to go, yeah.
Sorry, Paul, you said that council's looked at this?
Not our council, but through the associations that I'm in. The, the wording for this stuff has come from the twenties, yes.
Okay, is there-
There's a couple of variations, but yes.
Is there any reason to have Mr. Magner look at this before we set up?
Yeah, it's prob- it's probably worth just a quick look. Um, I mean, the rules are the rules of the rules. I mean, and as Paul points out, this is just kind of put aside because this is a policy we have to adopt. Even though it, because of the quirk and the reality in Massachusetts of twenty, not thirty, you know.
What, what's the deadline for adoption?
If we're gonna put it out with the W twos?
Yeah.
Tonight.
No.
Sorry. The worst, if you don't wanna do that, what we would do is we'd probably put the paperwork out anyhow. And if anything was changed, we would resend out the paperwork in a separate mailing, which we would have to do now. I mean, so it's not, it's not death, but-
Let's go ahead. Let's have Brian take a look at it in the event that any revisions are needed. Needed, not necessarily wanted, but needed, then we'll address it.
What we could do is we could, we could approve a pending review, hopefully tomorrow morning. If this was needed, a pending review of our council and our council not having any objections.
Well, I can't imagine that there's, yeah, what I'm looking for our council is, is a blessing or my God, who wrote this?
Well, that's what I'm saying. As long as they don't have objections.
Why don't we send out the W twos?
On the thirty-first.
Oh, jeez. Well, I guess that's one option. If you approve the contingent, and I, we, we wouldn't release it. If, if I get a thumbs down, we'll hold it.
Right.
We'll come back.
Yeah, get a-
Right, but that way, if he says tomorrow, it's fine and you've had our vote.
Otherwise, you can move quickly.
Yeah, Paul, it's, it's not a, a question as to whether or not this is done properly, but you can just, I'd much rather develop this approach.
That's fair enough. Now, if you, are you, you're saying you wanna sign this now and then just hold up?
We haven't voted on it yet.
Oh, sorry.
I make a motion.
Should really take all this time, man.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve the ACA look-back policy presented to us this evening, contingent upon review of our town council. And our town council confirming to the town manager that there are no, that he has no objections.
You got all that?
Second.
All right, turn of the discussion. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Okay.
I have the, now the second set of policies, it's really, it's really, I would say it's, 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 it's really three in one. Three, and let me, so, but, but before I, before I get into, we just get into more of a conversation. So part of the, the, the sports license goals has been to work towards AAA rating. And as part of that, we've been working very diligently to look at a whole lot of things. And one of them is policies. And one of the things that became clear as we looked at what we needed to do for our S and P, our standard and poor's review, was to update our reserve policies. What we had, had adopted four years ago was a, was a great start, but it was, it was not comprehensive enough to meet the current requirements, either of S and P specifically, but also of the government finance officers or the, or the state as encouragement, as a best practice. And so we, we took a look at a bunch of other communities and what they had been doing. And one of the other quirks in Massachusetts is that a lot of the lingo that we use is not used anywhere else. So we had to adopt kind of two parallel policies, or I should say one and three. There's what's something called the unassigned fund balance, which kind of overlays the other. They're not, they're, they're not, they're not separate policies. The unassigned fund balance policy really overlays the other three. It's one, it's one contiguous group. But that's the way S and P describes and the rest of the world describe these things. So while we talk about reserve funds and stabilization fund, they're free cash, the rest of the world just calls it unassigned fund balances. So they're kind of, the, the, that one little policy is the same as the other three. And we'll talk about the- Um, they're kind of, the, the, that one little policy is the same as the other three, and we'll talk about the specifics in a second, so. Um, when we actually, we did our, we did a bond rating meeting yesterday, uh, with our folks from, for the folks from S and P, and, uh, and one of the things that came up was this, was this set of policies, and, and we said, we're gonna be talking about them with the selectmen, and they said, that's great, uh, tell us when they adopt. And we said, well, you know, we're gonna have a conversation, and, uh, so they're, 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 I, I, I would say that it's fair to say they, they generally thought this was a great thing and we should be doing this. Now, again, I, I, this is just the start, and we're drafts in the corner of all the policy, up in the, up in the top left. Uh, so, um, this is the start of a conversation, and, um, um, so that, that's the context, and again, so, this is something that has, has been brought up, is, it was something we need to take a look at, S and P most certainly said we need to take a look at it. And I, I think it's just part of our ongoing evolution, um. So for context, before we talk about the specifics, the target here is, is, is a fifteen percent, uh, of, 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 uh, the, the goal is to have a fund that, that, that reaches a target of about fifteen percent. Just for our, just so, for, for context, we're at about twelve.
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent of our, of our ta, of our annual ta, of our, of our, of our levy.
Which is roughly thirty-nine million.
Yeah, so, um, it's about thirty-three million, thirty-two million?
Forty million, six, yeah, six million.
Right.
The levy is about thirty-two million dollars. Well, the whole budget is forty-two million dollars, but we have local revenues and state.
Right.
No, the levy, the.
Yeah, um, and, and some, and, and what makes it confusing is some of these things actually trigger off the budget as opposed to the levy, but, so the overall target for reserves is about fifteen percent of your levy.
Of four and a half million.
The budget, the forty-two.
For us, it's actually, it's really about six and a, six, six million bucks.
Six point three.
Six point three.
Forty-two million times fifteen percent is six point three.
Am I?
Five and thirty, you just.
No, it's the full, it's the full amount.
I'm sorry, yeah, you're right, I, 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 let me retract everything I just said in a, for a certain second.
Sorry.
Uh, the unassigned fund balance is fifty percent of expenditures, it's the total budget, um, the total budget of a town, uh, which is about.
The unassigned fund balance, which is otherwise known as free cash?
No, 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 no.
No. It's, it's free cash and stabilization, capital stabilization, so it's, it's a lot, it's a bigger number.
All the fun.
Yeah. For, for the.
So for us, you know, and if you, if you think about it, this last page, it, it's about six point three million dollars, given our, our current.
I just wanna make sure the terminology is clear, um, you're talking about unassigned, which is different than undesignedated.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
No.
Okay, well, just, just make sure, because the accumulation and use of free cash now referred to in mass accounting statutes as the undesignedated fund balance of the general fund, that's why I wanna make sure.
So, the rest of the world considers this unassigned fund balance?
Well, that's what I'm asking, unassigned and undesignedated are two different things, that's, that was my question, okay.
Right. Undesignated is a, is a subset of unassigned, is a, is a way of putting it, is, I think it's a better way of describing it.
Okay.
Okay. So, the, the reserve fund in the operating budget, and the free cash which is generated from the budget, and the stabilization funds, which are the bank accounts in which we put free cash in other funds, all add up to unassigned fund balance for S and P purposes. Well, I think Paul actually has a better analogy than I do, so.
Go ahead.
Can I step back, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, this trace is a very important discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Because these are policies that affect the entire budget. Um, I do have a number of questions here.
Sure.
Um.
I can see that.
And I, and I don't, but I don't see it really as on the agenda in such a way, I don't know who would be asked.
I'm not asking you to, I'm not asking you to approve them tonight.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to start the conversation, because I know that Dr. Schubert couldn't be here, so.
And then, that's what I was thinking too, is, is Dr. Schubert, I, I, this is something I'd like the, the whole board to sort of be listening to. So what we can do, at the pleasure of the chair, but I, I don't wanna repeat the conversation again for, for Dr. Schubert when he gets here.
Thank you.
I wonder if we shouldn't put this, uh, in a future, if there's no time thing critical on this, do this in two or three weeks, and have Dr. Schubert be able to be in on it from the beginning.
He and I have spoken, by the way, so.
If I may, let me, let me, let me also contribute to this consideration. Um, I did have an opportunity to, to talk with the town manager this afternoon on this subject, and, uh, we, in that conversation, agreed that this, that this topic would be brought forward as an introduction, uh, of the, uh, the concept of establishing, re-establishing, uh, formal reserve policies, uh, and, you know, re-establishing for the purpose of adhering to, more tightly to requirements as they've been laid out by S and P. With the larger goal, and it's continuing to be the larger goal of this town financially, to achieve a, you know, a triple-A bond rating. By the way, Kevin, and it's a very good point, none of this should be construed as a, a fait accompli, I think this, you're right, it absolutely is, um, a point of great discussion, because the leap between where our fund balances are now, and where, uh, the proposed fund balances were to be, assuming that there were no change in budget, would be a very incred, well, it would be just a, a phenomenal stride. That three percentage point leap is, is a lot of money, okay? I'm not saying it's, 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 it's not worthwhile for conversation, or it's certainly worthwhile to, to set as an objective for ourselves. But I agree with you, it's a conversation that the entire board needs.
I also think that, um, in a perfect world, I would like to have the advisory committee, actually, I'd like to have had them reviewed this, 'cause they're, they're there to advise us on these kinds of things.
Well, I think, I think it's worthwhile to discuss the concept of it here.
Right.
And certainly have advisory, and to the extent that there's intersection with, uh, with other committees that, that ought to be reviewing this, absolutely.
So that we could, we need to hear, I believe, we need to hear their input as to what their reaction is, I'd like to, how, how, what form you wanna take of that, but.
Well, I think, I think from a, from a governance standpoint, we, we, we don't need to wait with respect to understanding how and why we might do this. However, for its, the purposes of implementation and what it actually means on a, on a budgetary basis, yes, I, I think that the, you know, the advisory committee, their role is to advise ourselves in town meeting. And so I do believe it's, it's, uh, it's worthwhile to have it reviewed and weigh in, okay?
We're, we're. Right.
Uh, likewise, as I said, and to the extent that this intersects with other committees, uh, or any of these individual policies intersect with other committees, it's worthwhile to have that input as well. But for the, to make certain that the board is informed that this is, um, the chief financial officer of the town has determined in conversations with our bond rating agencies, that this is an area, uh, which, should we address, might help us to expedite achieving a triple-A rating, has brought this forward for our consideration. Is that a fair way to say it?
Yeah, exactly, and so, we can't, we have to start the conversation publicly, right, and we, so that, that's what, that's what tonight is.
Yes.
Tonight is not an effort to, to, uh, to do anything other than that. And getting direction on how we proceed is critical, because we're gonna be up on town meeting fairly soon, and this is something we'd like to see if we can address before we get deep into the weeds of town meeting, um, so.
May, may, may I ask, um, may I ask you, Chris, which I recognize probably goes right back to Allah anyway? As I read through this, uh, what I, what I focused in on is, of course, what, what does it, what does it mean in dollars and cents?
Sure.
Can, can I ask for the board that you put together a, uh, you know, a simple, well, a spreadsheet, which delineates based upon the exist, the existing budget, what this actually means? Um, you know, in other words, if we were to, if we were to enact it, what would it mean next year for us on a line item basis? What kind of an impact would it have on the budget? Could it actually fit? Okay, and, and, and so just, I'm, I'm not asking for an answer right now, I'm asking for it as data for the, for the board to consider, you know, following conversation.
I think it's important to understand that this is a goal, this is not something that, that we're gonna put into the budget per se, we just need to keep it in the back of our minds, this is what we're heading towards, because it, it won't.
But even if it's a goal, we've gotta see what that impact mean on the out years, okay?
Sure.
And, and it, it, as a goal, if we graduate our way into it.
Right.
Okay, we say, okay, let's see if we can achieve this over a five-year basis, we still have to look at it from the perspective of the impact it will have on departments and shared budgetary elements. Again, if we're going for a triple-A bond rating, those that share in the benefits are every part of the budget, it's not just the town, it also includes the school district.
Sure.
And as a result, if we're going to do that, if, you know, by, by directing money into reserve funds, necessarily means there's less in the collection for operations, okay?
Recognizing, of course, that some of this is built also as a protective device, so if there's an unusual expense, and I think.
Understood.
We need to, I've been having conversations with schools to try and, to try and encourage a broadening of that conversation about what's emergencies, right? We've all lived out on the town side, on the school side, it's a stark clip, but well, here's my pot of money, we'll deal with everything, well, we may, I think it's time to have a conversation, we've been having that about, well, maybe some of those things might be better in a bigger, broader pot, um, which benefits all of us, but again, so the, the points you raise are things we'll, we'll certainly address.
We, I, I'll, I'll extend an invitation again to the, to the chairman of the school committee, because that, it, it, that is a conversation that we've had off and on. Given some personnel changes that they, they've experienced recently, um, it may be a, an opportune time to reignite the conversation, so.
I think it'd be helpful that, well, we could show you what the ranges would be, and, you know, what the target numbers are. We're really not very far from this, I mean, remember when the town enacted a five percent goal, you had nothing.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so you went from zero to five, uh, that's a bigger leap than going from twelve to fifteen, and, and if you look at our trend lines, one of the things that movies are very impressed with, uh, movies, sorry, S and P was very impressed with, was our trend line positive, now, I, I want, both, on, on OPEB, on funding balance, on all that, and on, um, the, uh, I did remind them we're not, you know, our OPEB has increased, it's nice to see over four years, we have a tenfold increase in the money that we put aside for OPEB, that's dramatic. Um, we're not gonna keep that same curve.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Um, but what, what they wanna see, um, and I think what's, what's, what we're continuing to do is just devote, is to build best business practices. These aren't straightjackets, right? These are guideposts. What these are is, uh, you know, these are part of the road to being a triple-A credit, which is you wanna have things in place and policies in place. And again, there are moments when you, you, you can't always achieve every aspect. Being a triple-A credit isn't this by itself, I don't wanna tell you that, this is one piece of it, but it's an important piece of it, uh, uh, because it's all of this together. So all, everything that we do interacts with each other, and these just become, I mean, what, what reserve funds really are, and again, in this case, they're in the budget, after the budget, and in the bank, are protection devices, uh, to help us through rough times that are unpredicted, or emergencies that occur, um, and to, and to show that we're ready to, and again, at some point, it could be for, you know, moderating tax, uh, some, some, a lot of communities, as they build their reserves, um, a lot of communities, um, use it to help moderate future tax increases too. So you get to a point where you're financially secure enough, you can do a lot of other things, um, so, um, so, but those, so, uh, tell me, tell me your pleasure, would you, would you like me to pull something together, circle that to you? And you want me to go to the advisor committee and get some of their comments, I mean, uh.
Well, first and foremost, uh, for the board, uh, we'd love to take a look at what the percentages actually mean with respect to the existing budget.
We can do that. Okay.
Um, and this.
I have the numbers, do you still?
Yeah, we'll put it to, we'll put it to a spreadsheet.
Okay.
And, and this ought to, uh, resurface in a, in a following meeting, okay? Yes, I, I, especially as it impacts, uh, budgetary considerations, I think the, uh, the advisory committee, uh, should have an opportunity to weigh in on it. And turn, the advisory committee, we'd like to have a, before us, to have a, have a conversation about it as well.
Okay.
As you said, if there's, you know, if, uh, if the individual policies also intersect with other committees, I'm thinking specifically capital, and great, have a conversation with them as well.
Actually, none of this is directly theirs, but I could, I'm happy to get their input, I mean, uh.
Well, with, with, with respect to balance sheet, it, yeah, it does, but that's, the, the bigger thing from my perspective is to make sure that the board has at their disposal, the advice that comes from, comes back to us, and that ought to come back to us, uh, on, on these items.
Okay.
Um, at that point, then I think it just, it has to come back onto, to an agenda, um, and Paul, we're, the discussion that we're having right now is with respect to proposed reserve policies. And it might be worthwhile as well to make a simple comparison as to what we have now, in, that's in place, and, you know, and, and by, again, by comparison, what you're proposing to, to do. We have the proposals in front of us, um, do we actually have a reserve policy that's finally stated for undesignedated fund balances? I don't believe we do.
Oh.
Okay, so, let's, let's talk about that, and, uh, you know, I, I do notice in here that there's a specific reserve fund balance that proposes an increase, and that's specifically an area that I wanna hear from advisory.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, is that, does that wrap it up?
Yeah.
Does that, answer your question?
So we'll probably, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll get the numbers together, we'll circulate those back to all of you for, for thought, and if anyone has any specific questions, feel free to ask, and then, uh, I'll set up a, you know, there's a couple of.
Tomorrow night.
I wasn't planning on going that fast, but I can.
Well, there's a lot on the agenda for tomorrow night, so maybe that's not.
Well, actually, I'm gonna have to do the school committee, so, uh, early on, so maybe this is a good thing to get.
I just wanna make a point. Paul, what you said at the.
Sure.
Yeah, I just wanna make a, my report, when you do these statutes, if you could list these specific statute, you, on these here.
What do you mean?
You did in some places and none of this one, says according to Massachusetts general law, just cite this exact statute you're talking about. Um, I see that under the first paragraph of stabilization fund, first paragraph of free cash, just so that you're citing the statute, just cited, you know, writing what it is, so that when we read a policy like that, someone can go to the statute you're talking about.
Those are county statutes, I don't know what, yeah, all right.
That's a minor point. Minor point, but it's a, it's a, that's a refined point, so.
Yep, I follow.
Okay, good to move on?
Awesome.
Yep.
All right, um, sorry it's so late, but, uh, let's, uh, let's hear on the next, from the next end of the agenda, uh, presentation on the possible cohesive cultural district, and the proposed benefits there too. Paula, thank you very much.
Sure.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for being patient.
Sorry, keep it waiting.
Thanks, Paul, thanks for having us. Um, I'm Kristen Sherman, I'm with the South Shore Art Center, it's nice to meet you.
Hello, Kristen.
Um, so, I'm just here to present on behalf of a few folks who have been formally partnered, uh, to this point. Um, I've created a cultural district for the Cohasset Village area, and, um, this came to the art center about a year plus ago by Anita Walker, uh, for the Mass Cultural Council, she's the executive director, and she just sort of casually approached us and said, you might want to consider this, uh, for Cohasset Village, you have so many assets, um, in the cultural department here, uh, you should do that, but I sort of shelved it for a while, um, but then, after being in a position for about a year and a half, I started to approach some of our, um, cultural partners in town that we haven't necessarily partnered with, um, yeah. So I reached out to Pratt Library, um, the Playhouse, uh, the music circus, um, the Cohasset Cultural Council, of, of which, what is her? The Historical Society, um, of course, the town, and, and members of the chamber, um, just to have a beginning discussion about this. Um, and some of the goals of a cultural district are, um, I just printed this out from, you know, just to give me a guideline here, but attracting artists and cultural enterprises, which is in the art center's interest, of course. But, um, encouraging business and job development, establishing, um, the district as a tourist destination, which, um, you know, can mean you're from Hangham coming in for lunch, or dinner or something. Um, you know, preserving and reusing historic buildings, um, enhancing property values, and just fostering local cultural development. Um, so we have had two meetings, and, um, I've received some guidelines from the MCC, from Mass Cultural Council, of sort of the steps to take. And, um, one of the, one of the biggest and first steps is to have, uh, the endorsement of the, the selectmen town, and also make sure that the town can be the partner in our application. Um, that's actually what, what has to happen, um, the town has to apply for a cultural, to be a, um, cultural designation, um. So that's, that's why I'm here, um, and I will say a side, uh, benefit to some of, I think, these intangibles that you really can't measure yet, um, was just having all of these different organizations around the table, um, just kind of collectively sharing what goes on, because it's, not often that happens. But we're all planning like crazy independently, um, for, for our various and sundry, um, uh, programs, and, um, and the things that are involved in the town.
So it, it, it just, for point of clarification, are you proposing a, it's a geographic boundary?
Yes, so, a part of this is, um, you designate, um, um, a map, and I'm working with Chris to sort of hash out what that looks like here. Um, and I believe that the MCC has specifics, you know, like it can't, it has to be all walkable, um, that's one of their proposed things. Um, and you, you can choose, uh, what gets highlighted along the way, um, it's, it's just a starting point, and I think, um, that's one of the guidelines. Another thing is, um, just potential roles and. Another thing is, um, just potential roles and responsibilities through the partners. Um, and also timeline for diff, you know, first of all, this process, and it's flexible. It doesn't, it doesn't run on dates that are, that are fixed by the state. Um, and I believe that the, the other big one is it's a partnership for five years, and the state sort of assesses and sees, you know, are you meeting some goals? Do you feel you're having traction? Um, some of the benefits, I think, can be wayfinding, um, that the state can help us with. What, you know, whether it's just these very classic looking signs that sort of designate a, a boundary area, um, to just directional, shoot people down here from three A, um, I don't know. It's, it's, it's that simple, and I think, um, it's new. It's new for the, the state to be doing this, and it was nice that they thought of us to even, to, to, to do that, so.
Do you, um, yeah, forgive me, I, I seem to remember that we've, we had received an original sketch of this.
Hmm?
Did it reach out as far as the music circus?
Yes.
Yeah.
Basically, um, without having a map here, it's basically.
Oh, downtown.
The music circus, um, into the, uh, down, um, into, through the village, including the common, and then down El, all, then all the way down to the Historical Society, and then with an arm on Elm, all the way to the bar front.
Yeah, and I think that, just learning the rules as, as we go here, there can be different, you know, in, in one area, a couple of districts, but I think to start with one in the center here makes sense. Um, and I think we just need their advice too, of what they would recommend, um, when they, when we submit things to them.
I want, just wanna add in a couple of things. One is, an, an, um, Situate just recently did this, and I was at a workshop, uh, at the MMA conference, talking about economic development. It was an economic development for small communities. And there were probably six or seven different people in that room that talked about getting the, um, cultural designation from the Mass Cultural Council, and how it, it coalesced so much energy in the town, like you said, with just bringing a lot of people together. It was also some, it was a marketing tool, really, for a lot of the businesses. Um, and my understanding is, one of, one piece of the application is, you, you do have to have a map where you define the space, and Mass Cultural Council, as part of its review of whether they're gonna accept you as a cultural district, is to come and work on that map with you and make sure that it makes sense, and you're not just arbitrarily. Um, but the discussion has been from the music circus, and then we have the senior center and the library. Then it goes down Ripley Road to the art center. There's also some other smaller studios there. It encompasses the whole Historic District, Common District, and everything that happens there, and then Old Town Hall. Um, it goes all the way down to the Historic Society Dome, South Main, and then also the arm of Elm Street, which has a lot of historic points on, on that. There's a harbor walk that actually lead, that the Historic Society has put together, you know, years ago. Um, but there are points of historic, um, significance, thank you, on Elm Street, and leads you right into the harbor. So, um, I think that the group that met decided that that would be the map, that they would at least start, um, the application with. Um, you know, I, I think it's, um, it's something that Cohasset, I think, is uniquely qualified for, and probably more so than a lot of other communities that have the status, and, you know, I, I certainly think it's something we should go for. Um, just another little aside, is Anita Walker, who's the chair, uh, the executive director of the Mass Cultural Council, is a former Cohasset resident and former member of the advisory board. Um, and so she, she recognizes what a special, you know, cultural community we do have.
Folks, questions?
Yeah, a question. Are there grants available that would be from, either the state or from the senior social societies in the state?
I think that, um, when we met, uh, with Anita a year plus ago, she said, you know, there's not money in this, but, you know, it's kind of sowing the seeds, and I do think that there is now, um, grant money available for districts. I don't know how big, uh, it could be just nominal at this point.
Sure.
Um, but it is something, um, I haven't looked too far down that path, because it didn't seem, uh, worth to do that at this point. But, um, I do think it, it, it's a, um, it's a great effort that the state's actually helping to lead, which is recognizing, you know, tourism is really important, even to very small places, um, that are a little bit off the beaten path. Um, you know, more so than I think, you know, bigger, well-traveled.
I mean, so there's, there's the historic trail in Cohasset already, but the houses, houses of Palomino. Um, and there's, there's tremendous, you know, old architecture this year, and simple things like signage, which may not even be an expensive way to do it. You, you go to a lot of towns in New England, and the, the signage is, it's, it's the older signs, it's non-lit, it's hand painted, and just makes for a little bit nicer walk to town, and draws people.
I think actually, on the website, they have, um, on the MCC website for cultural, there's, there's actually photos of their signs that they, um, if, when you, when you have these boundaries put up, I think, um, you know, you have, you're probably, by putting in a application, you're accepting that you might buy these signs, so it's probably like, like a hundred and fifty dollars per sign. Um, but it's something to, to consider, if there's any cost to this.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, I, I think that the benefits outweigh, you know, I don't know.
This designation is not a, doesn't have grant money tied to it, but it, again, it's a designation that, you know, when you're applying for cultural facilities funds, which is something we may have to look at when we redo, um, the, the town hall, the older part, um, it's just, it's just that extra, we're one of these, you know, it's just an extra rating system, if you will, and privilege, that I think will bode well in, in applications, even for programming, for elder affairs, who knows, you know, it's part of something bigger.
Well, I think also it was helpful to see everyone around the table and talk about programming, and one of the things that came up, I think, Chris may have brought it up, was there's an anniversary Cohasset's birthdays coming up.
Two fifty, is it? Five years, four years?
So it was something that was a nice conversation to start in advance, as, as opposed to six months ahead, to say, what are we gonna do? So it's something everybody can work toward together, and, um, sort of falls within the timeline, coincidentally, um, that you are sort of in check with the state, um, on this partnership, so.
Chris, is there, is there any restrictions for use if this designation is made?
Not to my knowledge. This is more of a, um, I don't wanna call it an overly district, it sounds very formal that way. It's more of just a designation, you know, it's, it, it doesn't have any zoning restrictions, it doesn't have any planning restrictions.
No, like a.
There's no use restrictions. No, no, it's, it's more just a, it's more of a, a recognition, more than a, um, anything else.
Designation of a national historic site or things like that.
Yeah, I mean, but even those come with strings, you know, this doesn't have any strings now.
Public relations.
Yeah, yeah, it's more of a, it's more of a designate, it's more of a, come to, we, we, you know, come, oh, that's interesting. Why don't we walk through the Cohasset Village, uh, you know, cultural district and, you know.
And the state does do some promotion about it too, and so that's, that's kind of a helpful thing.
And again, I think one of the things, uh, that's been brought up, I think it really, when I sat through the, the meeting that I was able to attend, I know Diane's been able to attend another one, it, 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 it really a platform, I think, and I see Jen nodding in the audience, that it's a platform, I think, to bring a, a, a very diverse group together in a way that wasn't there before. And if it, if it did nothing more than that, that would be good. Because it would be bringing business community, the cultural community, and the, and the, and the, and the, and the, and the not-for-profit community together, uh, to talk about issues, um, and then positive developments, so.
Yeah, I think the cultural districts are all about.
Members of the board.
Yeah.
To involve the Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, yeah.
Is this something you work closely with them at?
Yeah, and, and so, you know, we've only had two meetings. But we, you know, with the invitations we sent out, we make sure that somebody from the chamber is there, and, and it's, you know, uh, I think Cindy Velino, um, at Spoke's Gallery was there one day, and, um, you know, we just make sure that someone's in the room and knows that the meeting's happening, if they can come, um, which is great. And so, you know, we're all, and everybody's sharing a little bit of the load, but I think it'll, it'll get a little more, um, as time goes on. It'll, things will, um, become more.
Have you worked much on, I had Chancel on the document, it needs to be done with the goals, the objectives, and all that.
I, when I, when I just, I simply started with looking at the application, and the first thing is the town has to apply, has to be. So that was our first conversation of, you know, I need to make sure that that's okay with everybody here in the town, and that we can, um, that we can go forth. Um, I think that the, the write-up and all that sort of stuff, like the, um, more maybe, the application. Um, we actually have, the, the Situate, um, Cultural Council just said, here you go, here's all our stuff that we did, and kind of gave us a, their path, and said, you know, what, what apply here, you know, use. So it's, it was really helpful to see that it's manageable, and.
So as far as the authority to approve, we go ahead, is there something the selectmen do, or is that the way we go to town meeting? And we, we, we call to the statute and whatever, and.
Yeah, it's just a, it's a, it's a selective thing.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I make a motion that we, uh, go ahead and endorse the, um, development of a designation of a cultural district in Cohasset. May I?
May I respectfully request that, um, you reword the motion, because we're endorsing the application. Okay? And I should just wanna get those words in, that we're endorsing the application, the application being filed.
Right.
In conjunction with the town. Is that correct?
No, the town has to make the.
The town is the.
Sorry, the town, town has to make the application.
So you're actually authorizing, you're, you're authorizing an application to be prepared and submitted on behalf of the town to create a Cohasset cultural district. Okay, is that, I didn't think we're gonna get that far tonight, to be honest with you, but.
Yeah, well, I'll make a motion that we authorize the application of the town to, to, uh, to the state for the designation of a cultural district in Cohasset.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, further discussion?
No, I think it's a great idea.
The, the only thing I just wanna add is that at some point, um, we have to adopt a resolution, so there'll be another step in the application process. Just so we know.
This is just the application.
Just go for it, let's make it happen, and, um.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that.
I don't think you've voted on it yet.
Oh. I take all that.
All right, is there further, further discussion?
No.
All right, hearing none. Let's move to a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay, it passes unanimously. The application will be, uh, completed and, and submitted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Kristen.
Members of the board, if I may ask, uh, I'd like to take the BYOB discussion first before selectmen comments. Um, the, uh, if, if there's objection, please let me know, otherwise that would, that would complete our formal business for the evening. I'm gonna make a motion, we change the format of the agenda to have the BYOB policy discussion prior to the selectmen's.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, good. Um, the basis for the BYOB discussion is pretty well laid out in the, in the paper that you received. At the moment, um, the board of selectmen, as the licensing authority, um, we need to consider a BYOB, bring your own bottle, or bring your own liquor, um, policy for common villagers with fixed establishments. And the reason we need to consider a policy is, in, in the absence of one, there is one, and it's open season. Okay? That creates potential liabilities for ourselves, certainly for business owners. All right? Um, the, the, the questions before the board, and we're not gonna resolve all this evening, that's not the intent. The intent is to start a public conversation. The items for the board's considerations are not limited to, but they include, um, as I just said, in the absence of a policy, um, BYOB is acceptable and without limitation. If the board wishes to accept a BYOB policy, uh, we must be cognizant of potential negative impacts on existing license holders. Those, those would be license holders with full liquor licenses. If the board wishes to restrict BYOB, uh, we must do so explicitly. All right, and then last but not least, um, should BYOB be adopted, um, we might wanna consider the restrictions and limitations that would govern, govern an issued permit. So that would be, how would one execute an age check? How is overindulgence policed? Uh, how do you deal with open containers? All right, and then last but not least, you know, is there a need for tips training, and who should have? Finally, eh, we'd have to ask the, the more basic questions, power, local enforcement, would, uh, would be employed with respect to governing, uh, such a policy? So, those are just some of the items that I'm, uh, you know, that I looked at, and as I said, this is no, by no means a complete list, but it's, it, I think, at least initiates the conversation. All right.
So, yeah, so I've been kinda reviewing this, um, recent, this, and that's just, there's a wide range of, uh, what towns do. Some have it without any obvious, and again, what's written in the state, and BYOB is, there's no policy, but it's, it's there. Small number of establishments in, in these towns may have it. Some have the requirements of a, you need to be filing a permit or some sort of authorization through the town, and some don't have anything at all. So it's, I think it's good we're looking at it. Um, I think locally, I think it's a mixed bag, whether they have the BYOB or not, so I think it's great we're honored to look at it. I've gone through, basically I meet people in town, or some of the owners of businesses, and I ask them, what do you think about BYOB? Kind of about seventy different, um, votes, kind of, I would say. And it's put about sixty for BYOB and forty against, so, um, the things that came up. One of them was, if you have a full liquor license, and, let's say it's beer and wine and keg beer, for example, um, there's a certain investment in the liquor license of basic capital. You've got beer, you've got kegs, you've got the piping, you've gotta clean the piping, you've gotta keep it up to date, you have to have a refrigeration system. If you have wine, you need to have a wine cellar, some sort of investment of just volume of wine and types of wine. And it's gotta be secure. Um, it's a good piece of, of investment of a, of a full liquor license that is there. Um, then you have other kind of, uh, you know, pizza places, type, like fair type restaurants that, um, would have a beer or wine as opposed to a full liquor license. Some of them in town have a beer and wine, malt liquor, um, a malt license, and some have none. And I think that's really probably where most of the BYOB would probably come in, the, the smaller restaurants, the, um, smaller dining establishments. And as always, the question of competition of someone who has a full liquor license, would be investment of the wine and beer, um, piping for the kegs and things like that. So those are the ones that, those are the things that come up when I was around town talking to, to different people.
Yeah, I mean, my, my, um, a couple of things. I, I would wanna know, if we were to establish a policy, can we, can we require that people have a, a permit, a BYOB permit? So we can set that, can set a permit and the restrictions around that, um, you know.
The, the, the permit itself, the, the application for the permit can be, uh, can be restricted. There's, this is an area where state law allows great latitude to the local licensing authority. And, again, with that latitude is also the recognition that in the absence of a policy, anything goes.
Right, it's a lot worse.
And right now, we have no policy.
Yeah, and, and the other thing is just the, you know, we require so much of establishments to be a licensed liquor holder, as, as we went through earlier, this, you know, this evening. Um, you know, there, there is a significant investment that they have to make in, in their, um, in being able to do, having, having the privilege of, um, you know, selling alcohol. So for, to go into a pizza place and be able to bring your own wine, as nice as that is for the consumer, um, there is a competitive thing that I see is kind of detrimental to the liquor license.
Let me, let, let me make sure that, that this part's clear to the, to the board and anybody who's, who's listening. Um, a, um, a BYOB policy applies only to non-licensed entities, okay? There, um, there is still, to the best of my understanding, there is nothing within state law that allows a full liquor license holder to establish a BYOB, um.
Correct.
Structure for themselves, right? You can't bring something on premises if you have, you have a license.
Yeah.
Um, I will point out that, uh, places that have adopted them, and adopted them successfully, have done so with, uh, with, with clear structures, um, that surround permission from the business owner. Okay? Clearly defined responsibility of that business owner, or lack of responsibilities from their perspective. In other words, where are they, where do their duties lie? Um, and very clearly designed and enforced policing policies. And policing by this, by that, I mean, by way of the liquor ages.
Oversight.
Right, oversight. As well, there is a clear definition as to what businesses are capable of applying for this, okay? Uh, I've had some of these conversations separately with the town manager. Interesting to note that, that Boston adopted a BYOB policy this year, which was quite a surprise. And among the limitations that they brought forward was that, were. And among the limitations that they brought forward was that, were a limitation on the size of the establishment, how many people it could seat, okay? And whether or not they had table service, all right? And that was their view on it, and their view is that, you know, based upon the size of the establishment and, and table service, well, if you wanted to go forward, maybe you should have a, you know, full liquor license. Other, other cities and towns that have adopted a permissive policy, that is to say they allow it, have, have taken a similar view, but their, their view was, well, it's not really table service, but it is the, the size and its operating hours, you know? So a lot of that comes into play. These, you know, and likewise, the, a policy, if it were permissive, would define hours, in which it were permitted. Likewise, the town, the board would adopt for the town a policy that goes the other way, it's absolutely not, it's forbidden. My, my proposal to the board, however, is that we discuss, debate, take input from the public, from A B C C, from our own, our, our, our own enforcement agents, as well as town council and local businesses. We encourage it, we solicit it, but by the time we get to town meeting, we have a policy adopted at the board level. And finally, I'm proposing that it be a policy as opposed to a, as opposed to a bylaw. The basis for that is, is as much reading as I've done on this, it occurs to me that no matter what, the first several years or years of trial and error, and a policy can be amended, whereas a bylaw takes an act of town meeting to do. And ultimately, for, if, if there is a need to amend something in a speedy fashion, it's better that it's done at the policy level and with the then existing board, as opposed to, you know, having to wait to go through a town meeting.
And it, it could just be an expansion on our own liquor regulations, which are, which is a policy that the board adopted.
Right.
Legally, is BYOB the term?
I don't know that it is.
Okay.
I don't know that it is, it's just, it's a colloquialism.
And what, and what is that? What's that mean?
Bring your own bottle.
Bottle.
Yeah.
Okay. I always thought it was beer, but that just shows my bias.
Well, that, that was college.
Okay, that's right, but, you know, that's something I would wanna explore too, like what, what does that really mean?
No, and, and again, that's, it, it, what it means is, what it means is what you would.
What's a bottle? Do you open it there?
Well, yeah, it's open and obvious question, yeah.
What it means is what this board says.
Right, exactly, we'd have to define that, you know, you can't bring that bottle and have, you know, a mixed cocktail in there.
Yeah.
Under, under the BYOB, there's no hard liquor.
No, it, it, it's restricted, it's, it's restricted.
So there is a, there is a legal, state legal definition of what we're talking about.
Yes, and it's worth, it's worthwhile to note that under the state, under state liquor laws in this state, we, the state does not allow for a corkish fee to be charged. And likewise, it does not allow for restaurant employees to handle a, a bottle walked in.
So they prohibit a corkish fee?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. We.
So one quick thing, as it stands now, the, if you had any of the establishments in town currently could allow BYOB currently walking in, provided that they permit it, but if you're an owner and you don't have liquor license, and you don't wanna have someone bringing you alcohol, you can say no. So, the owner still has the authority and purview to say, yes, you can, or no, you can't.
Yeah, no, this is a policy, this is a.
Yeah, just so the people out in the public, you can't just bring it in if you want, because it's the owner's.
The owner's prerogative.
Prohibitive to decide whether or not, it's okay.
That's right. Yep.
So it seems to me, when we have, as we're having this discussion, we should sort of, I would wanna step back to see how big of an issue this is for Cohasset, whether this is, just hoping, how, how important it is, I think I'm gonna try to do some conversations like you're having to see whether it is, because, I don't know how big of an issue it is. But favorable towards it would be the fact that, you know, if we do deliver a policy or a regulation, at least we then can control what's going on better. And there's, I think there's a lot of attractive, you know, reasons for that. On the other side that I'm reflecting on too is, once we step in as the government and start to regulate or in this in any way, then we need to consider in our reflections, well, what are the costs gonna be to us, what are the liabilities gonna be, if any? You know, we need to think about that, how much that could be, and then in consideration of how big this is for this town, so that's sort of where, where my thinking is.
Yeah, and, and again, I reiterate, among the things I wanna make sure that we, we do in these discussions is call in A B C C.
Right.
To the extent that we might be able to get some, someone here as a representative. We speak with town council, you know, specifically with, do you recall, Chris, who amongst the, the firm is most familiar with liquor laws?
I think, but I'd rather confirm before I.
Okay, fine, but long and short of this, we'd like to, we'd certainly like to consult with town council. To, to make, or to, to gain some understanding as to what, what rights and responsibilities.
We'd be getting into.
We take on, okay?
Also too, I think your, your point is sort of a creative one as far as a policy, was I'm not so sure how many towns do this through a policy, but we, we're gonna need to reflect on the difference between a policy and, and a regulation, because, you know, again, I don't, I don't.
Well, it's, it's really a regu, I mean, effectively, it's a regulation, I mean, and I hate to, because it, it's a law. I mean, a policy is, is a guy, is a guidance document, a regulation is something you must legally follow.
Right.
So it's effective, you're, you'd be adopting BYOB regulations, which would be adopted.
Well, no, but I think what the chairman's suggesting is that we not, that we do more of a generalized policy, or did I miss that?
No, well, no, the, the chairman may have misused the English language, which would not be all that unusual.
The King's English you were using.
Yes, I mangled it on my own. We, we have the, the capability of, of developing local regulations, and this would, this would be a regulation. However, I do wanna make the distinction that I'm not proposing that we bring this forward as bylaw, or a proposed bylaw.
Can we do a regu, can we make regulations without?
Yeah, the liquor license regulations are.
That being the case, I think that would, the suggestion of doing it maybe within our progressive policies and make it another page, you know, whatever, as we have a discussion.
Probably regulations, right.
Why, why create a brand new document?
The, at the moment, are there further comments from anybody else?
Yeah, probably only just getting the, you know, police department involved and saying, what, you know, what do you think would be concerns? Would it be durable, is it a huge concern, is it a small concern, is it, you know, something that's almost part of what we'd be expecting in town? Honestly, a regulation probably, in my view, would be a easier way to control if it is gonna be out there, you know, when it is BYOB. So when the police go by, they see somebody who has beer on the, you know, on the sidewalk cafe, and realize that's a BYOB establishment.
Yeah, I wanna make sure again that the board recognizes that this proposal is, is, is a proposal for the board to consider either affirmative or negative action, okay? I'm not, I'm not trying to suggest any particular direction other than taking one.
Yeah.
Okay?
Sort of like the application process, is that, is that the?
Well, in, in, in many respects, yes, but it was.
That's the ground procedure.
In the, in the absence of policy, we have nothing, okay? In the absence of a regulation, we have nothing. So I'm, I'm proposing that we create a regulation, whether that's affirmative or negative is up to the board. All right.
I just have an administrative question, so, so the next time we talk about this, I wonder if, if it's something we could formalize as a hearing, so that we make sure we have, do, do we even need to call it that, or, but I do think we need to have a meeting that we're, we're going to be having of all the players as part of the conversation, it doesn't make sense to have the police in one week, maybe C C in another week.
Well, what I, what I would, what I would ask actually is how you want this to be structured, so, if you, obviously, I can send out.
It's a discussion for breakfast.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we'll, we'll pick it up, but, but what we can certainly do is reach out, I can get comments from council and the P D easily enough. We can implore, you know, the mayor into a story and see what kind of feedback they get, and, and then we can ask people to send comments, and then we'll set a public date, so people will know it's happening.
Right.
But it wouldn't be a hearing in the, in the, in the same sense of, or.
Right, okay.
We can even do a forum if you want to, I mean, you can do whatever you want, we can set a public forum on it if you want to, sort of bring business owners in, you know?
Just wanna make certain the board is completed with his current conversation, okay? We have, I've seen two hands raised in the audience, matter of fact, there's only two people in the audience, so that works out well.
It was actually great, I mean, that is not invisible.
No, 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 she's, but she's at work, so. Chair recognizes Peter Peskett.
Peter Peskett, right, I, I think this is a great direction, and you should deliberate on this. I only have a very small question, is, do you have any sense of how many businesses would be affected? In other words, how many people, how many food service folks do not have a liquor license?
The total number of common bitlers in the town without liquor licenses, I think, eighteen, maybe?
I was gonna say twenty, yeah, that's a lot.
That's a lot.
Mm-hmm.
So this, this has, this has potential of having an effect.
It's, it's.
Yeah, but Shaw's, yeah, Shaw's and Stop and Shop are not gonna have liquor.
Yeah, yeah. They don't have seating.
All they have. But, no, it's, I mean, on its, on its face, it, it, it could be fifteen to twenty, and.
Well, it's a big enough population to, to have some thought about, for sure.
Actually, and, and for what it's worth, as, as, as a matter of full disclosure, there are, I, I actually began to think about this from running into it. I was in a, in a local carryout establishment, and someone was sitting and having a glass of wine, bottle open on the table, and I thought, well, that's, wait a minute, that can't be, and of course, realized, I realized that in fact, it can be. So after years of understanding that no such thing could possibly exist in this town, little did I know that it's been open season all this time. And as, you know, as it dawned on, on me at that point, that in fact, BYOB, bringing your own bottle to a restaurant, could take place, looking into the regulations, I recognize it was a bit like not having speed limits, you know, so. Fair enough, I, I'm sorry, Jen, would you like to add something?
Sure, I guess probably because I kind of started this conversation with you guys, I'm just really looking for guidance. You know, we wanna do some meals once in a while, we don't really need a full liquor license, don't really have the ability to store it, and all that stuff. We love to mentor teenagers, we have a ton of teenagers that work for us, don't want them anywhere near alcohol, which is kind of why the BYOB appealed to me. You know, was I could offer my clients, you know, a more high-end dinner, you know, once, twice a month, once a week, whatever, without getting into a whole big liquor license, you know, thing where I, I wouldn't use it that much. It's not about not paying a fee, I have no problem paying a fee. You know, we just feel that for us, it would be more of a non-use issue, that, you know, the, the license could go to somebody who needed it more on more of a full-time basis, whereas we really only want it on a part-time basis. With that said, I have to say with the open bottle thing, I can't tell you how many Starbucks coffees I confiscate on any given weekend that are spiked, that people bring in.
Really?
Every, people don't bring beer to a bar, I don't understand why they bring spiked coffee to my restaurant, but they do. So I guess what I'm looking for from the board is just kind of some direction as to, you know, whether it's more appropriate for me not to make you guys go through this and apply for a smaller license or permit, or whether this is just kind of a big can of worms that's been opened and we're gonna deal with anyway.
It, it, by, by, by the very fact that there is no regulation, it's open, it wasn't opened by anybody, it's open.
Yeah, and we're in the can of worms business, and that's, that's what we're here for.
Yeah, we, so, I think this, this honestly, this came up.
I seem to be swimming in a few of them, so you make.
This came up, I, I think it's honestly, it's a good thing that we found, identified, and now we decide we're trying to go. Because if there weren't, you'd have the same problem, who knows? I'm glad it came up.
I, I, I don't believe that the town has ever had a position or regulation on bring your own, and as I understand it, many communities don't. And it's, you know, it, we are in a litigious society, and that is a huge opening, potential opening.
Absolutely.
Okay, and so, in, our, our exercise is to try and develop a regulation that begins to close that opening from a risk standpoint, but likewise, it also presents a potential opportunity to either eliminate it entirely or do it in such a way that we can actually encourage an expansion of business, so. Which way we go, I have no idea, but this starts the conversation, and frankly, Jen, since you're here, I encourage you publicly to talk, talk up the next time this is on the agenda.
Okay.
Because we, we really would like input from the business community, okay? I, I think that, that would go a long way toward informing any decision the board's gonna make.
And I have to say, you know, prior to the smart, the earlier conversation about the parking, all the restaurants down the village work great together. You know, we all really kind of do what the other ones don't do, so it's, it's kind of a good, it's a good.
Diversity.
Yeah.
Business community.
It really is, and we all, we all really get along really well, so it's a, it's a good conversation for all of us to have, because if I'm gonna hurt Mr. Dooley's by doing it, which would never happen, but then that's a problem for me, then I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna step on those toes.
Right. On the other hand, Jersey barriers to keep your, your driveway open would be nice.
Well, no, no, Bill and I have had a long conversation about justifiable homicide and parking. He's like, please don't, please don't.
All right. Are, are we ready to move on from this topic for now?
Yeah.
Okay, Chris, it's, we'll, we'll, we'll frame it up for tomorrow morning. All right, with that, we move on to selectmen update, and Kevin, I handed off to you.
Okay, I'm not gonna go over, I could talk about the Massachusetts Municipal Annual Meeting that I attended, Diane was there too, and Chris was there too, just to s, I do wanna highlight a few points, because I could talk on and on about how good this conference was. Anybody who's involved with our committees and structures, we have encouraged each year, it's a great two-day conference to go to, the panels are very interesting, worthwhile. So it was very rich in all kinds of stuff, there's a few, so I'm just gonna limit my remarks, just a few highlights. One that really struck me, because I have attended two others, is, is the opioid crisis, it permeated the, the whole conference. It was, it was like the hot topic everywhere, all the major speech makers, all the, all the politicians, most all the committees were talking about it, dinner tables, and it just really was striking to me, 'cause I had been to the one last year, and this year, you know, that, that so permeated, you know, the entire conversation, that, you know, a lot of cities and towns are really, you know, besieged with this problem. And it was covered, it's on everybody's mind. I attended one confer, one meeting on this that was dedicated just to the opioid crisis, the Mass Municipal Associates, one of, one of the forums was on this. And the committee that had it, put together a brochure that outlined, and they published it just that day, and I have it, and I'll give it to the Safe Harbor people as well as anybody else, I think Diane's holding it up. But it holds, it, it, it goes over this issue, gives a, an outline of it, and it also gives concrete, like eleven different steps that towns can take to, 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 uh, work against this issue and so forth. So that's available, I have a copy, I guess Diane has a copy, we, Safe Harbor, we should make sure they get a copy, and anybody else that has one. It's very, it's very useful, but to see the, the emotions of the mayors and town officials funding, funding this issue is just, it's unbelievable. They had some mayors there talking, and all I could think of is when I listened to them speaking, they, they're all like great mayors, people like, and I'm sitting there thinking, these are people you'd wanna have as the mayors, running your communities and so forth, and they were overwhelmed, very emotional about the whole thing. So the magnitude of the opioid crisis is just, is as significant it came through in this conference. Another session I went to that I thought would be worth sharing is, they talked about emerging, emerging economic issues, emerging forces in our society. And one of them, it was, was the sharing's idea of the Airbnb, of, you know, Lyft cars, you know, Uber economy they call it and so forth. So I could, you know, it's quite an elaborate subject in a way, but it, this idea of sharing services amongst people is gonna have a radical transformative effect on our society and impact our towns. So for example, with Airbnb is growing so rapidly, this kind of concept, it's gonna have an impact on hotels and. it's gonna have an impact on hotels and, and general, you know, structural places where people, you know, stay overnight and so forth, the Lyft economy and so forth. But the sharing economy, I guess is what I'm trying to say, where people do business with each other, and they, Etsy, they pointed up, and eBay was the original of this. It, it's just something not to be ignored, it's coming at us very rapidly. In the next few years, it's gonna transfer, not only your personal lives, but also the things that towns have to think about. One of them we discussed earlier that did come up in the conversation was automobiles. There's gonna be a lot less automobiles around because of the sharing economy, and because they're all the smart technology and so forth. So it was just fascinating to hear that, and I wanted to sort of bring that word forward, because it's the kind of stuff that towns need to be thinking about, you know, now actually, because it's coming upon us fairly quickly. Let me just see if there was anything else that we hadn't, hmm. I think that's, that's enough on it right now, it was an excellent conference, really glad that I attended it. And that was the end of my remarks.
Okay, Diane?
I'll just take off on that, I was, I was gonna speak specifically about the opioid issues that were brought up at MMA, but Kevin referred to the, the brochure, and I would love to, if we could, maybe spend a little bit of time just reading at our next meeting, and, and maybe just acknowledging as a board, the, the ten steps that the Mass Municipal Association recommends for communities to showcase leadership on the issue. And I will tell you that we are doing almost all of them, so I don't think it's any stretch, and it's not money. And one is take the lead to increase public awareness and engagement. You know, pilot innovative programs, Safe Harbor's doing a lot of this in conjunction with the town. So I would love to maybe just, I did type it up in the smaller, just the ten bullets, have it in our next packet, and maybe just read them, and I'd love to, it's the chairman's discretion, but I think it's an important thing to actually put out there, more than just go to the, you know, we can share this all we want, but I think it would be much more impactful if we were to list the ten and say, we're doing nine of them, and let's get to the tenth or something.
I think Safe Harbor is coming to one of our meetings, and that might be a great meeting for us to discuss that with them while they're here.
Perfect, and then everything Kevin said, the conference is fabulous, and the best part about it is really just connecting with other, other selectmen, other town managers, town administrators, and, you know, just sharing best practices and worst nightmares, that kind of thing. On another topic, the master plan, planning process is well underway, and there was a great meeting, the planning board, last week, and the gentleman from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council was there, helping kind of facilitate the conversation. The master plan, when we really get into it, is gonna deal with all kinds of things. It's gonna, you know, with, with land use, and with zoning, and with harbor, you know, we, you know, we started talking about the situation with the harbor, and I talked about the letter of mat revisions that we'd love an update on, whenever we get an update. But also, there's bigger picture, longer-term things, like sea level rise, that certain people in town are really proactively trying to get us to talk about, so. Anyway, the next meeting is a planning board meeting on February twenty-fourth, where the master plan is on the agenda. And then, more importantly, on March fifth, which is a Saturday, there's gonna be a public forum. And anybody in town who's interested can come, and the Metropolitan Area Planning Council will be managing that meeting, and they'll walk people through a series of exercises to try to get as much, and they're professionals at this, to try to solicit as much information and input from the community. Even things that you don't think about might be relative to the conversation, they'll find ways of kind of eliciting it from you. So I, you know, March fifth, Saturday, I know it's ski season, but it really is an important day for anybody that, you know, cares about the town in the future and in the planning process. Anyway, that's it, I talked real fast.
Couple of quick things, mentioning the opioid problems. I'm trying to work with the new president of the South Shore Hospital, Dr. Jean Green, to see if there are any other options out there to help the town and local communities with the opioid epidemic. He's done a lot of work down in suburban hospital down in Maryland. He's very much locally focused and community-focused, so he's a good addition to the hospital, and I think that may be helpful with the opioid. The other, I went to the rep department, and they're looking at an option for refurbishing the field house that's up there, it's a snack shack. They're looking to potentially put in a plum building, which is ADA compliant, a little bit larger storage and facilities, and probably two stories. They're in the very early stages of looking at options and plans there. Governor's budget came out, he did recommend a four-point-five percent increase of local aid, one-point-six percent increase in chapter seventy, which is the school monies. For the town, if that comes through, it'd be about eighteen thousand from local aid increase, it would be about forty thousand increase to chapter seventy. Typically, the governor's first round is amended at the state house and the state senate level. In the last five years, it's always increased, either local level or chapter seventy levels. I strongly urge anyone who's in town, call the governor's office, call the state house, Representative Bradley, if you don't have a senator present. So that puts us a little, a little bit hobbled from that point of view, but nevertheless, state revenues are up as of December, total state revenues are up four-point-five percent for total from last year, so there is monies available. And I think if you, if you speak to the house and senate and the governor, we can potentially push for a little bit more local aid, that's there. And I think that's it.
Okay. My only comment was a surprise that I got this evening, when it came in.
Happy birthday.
Yes, it's not quite the same thing. On January sixth, the Jack Buckley teacher at Cohasset Middle School, his class, a group of seniors in, as a, I believe it was the capstone, their ongoing visits and education with respect to local government. And we spent an hour with the class, and they were, you know, as you would expect out of a class of seniors in high school, with about eight o'clock in the morning, it started slowly and ramped up from there. The surprise was that there are twenty-four thank you cards, handwritten thank you cards to the board and to Chris, from the students. Now, given that they say Cohasset Middle High School on them, I'm sure that this might have been encouraged strongly by the, by the, by the teacher. And I, so part of the surprise is the congratulations that comes back to us, but mostly I wanted, I wanna extend a hearty thank you to, to each of the kids for spending the time to write the note. And likewise to Jack Buckley, for instilling two things in their students. One is the, the art of the power that comes with a handwritten note. And that's a, that's an element of, it's an element of manners that seems to be lost these days. And taking the time to encourage the students to do that is not lost on me. And secondly, the, as I said, for each of the students to take a little bit of time, think about what might have been even modestly meaningful to them in their, you know, in their eight o'clock session with three old folks, is really nice to see. It was actually a very meaningful hour of my life spent with them, and apparently, it was reasonably meaningful to the kids as well, so that's it from me.
Did you just call me old?
I did, yeah, I did. By comparison to the audience, by definition, we are.
I do apologize for missing that, because then I'd be also as, as old as the rest of the people. It's my only saving grace.
One more thing. I'm really sorry, I also just wanted to acknowledge the MLK breakfast and the great work that all the, the diversity committee in town and the leaders of the different church congregations do to, to put on a really special program on Martin Luther King Day.
All right, thank you. And Chris, we handed away for the town manager's update.
Okay, a couple of quick things first. So because of the new special elections that have been added to the calendar to fill the senate seat, the board is going to need to look at considering changing times or the dates of its meetings, I sent you a memo on that. If you could just get back to me, your thoughts independently, and I will then get back to you with a proposed amended calendar. One that we are gonna have to change for certain is the, the meeting in, if we're doing this second before, that would be the November meeting, which turns out to be Election Day, which is the first Tuesday after the first Monday, as I recall. So, but that's a long way away. But the other, we do have to move a meeting in April and a meeting in May. So those will have to be moved. The warrant is in, I have a first draft, I'm not giving you yet, but so if you can see, there's a fresh first draft warrant in production. Doesn't have many articles on it yet, but has all the core ones, so we're starting the production, so.
Okay.
There we go. You'll have something more elaborate next week, in next meeting, as the season begins. You all have a copy of this, a hard copy of the CAFRA.
Thank you.
This is also either on or soon to be on the web, so if anyone wants to peruse, it's hundred and some odd pages. Hundred and, hundred and six pages, hundred and twelve pages, hundred and eighteen pages. And that, this is, that actually is my picture, so actually, yeah.
You should.
I, I, I actually took that one, for myself, all of all things, so. But we have a cool picture of John Smith in here, and a couple of other things, so. I will ask early, if anyone has any nice pictures they might wanna include in the future, send them in. We'd like to use them.
There was, by, just as an aside, there was a, there's a collection of pictures that Linda Fector shoots that are very much worth asking about.
I've used some of hers in the past, so.
And there was one published recently by, I think it's a James Seacord.
Seacord, the, the one of my, like.
Yes, the, the wave breaking across the top of my delight. It was just shot this week, I think. So.
Good thing it's better than that.
Wow, wow, wow. That's cool.
Yeah, that's my delight.
Someone's gotta live out there too, they bought it.
Leave it, leave my phone there.
So there's some highlights, some potential upcoming topics. We need to do an executive session and do some legal updates, I think, at the next meeting, if anyone's available on the ninth. The draft warrant, we'll discuss starting, I think, next meeting if we can. We have a, a presentation on a memorial, Tommy Wimbley, which I think will be at the next meeting. A Safe Harbor update is planned, I think, for next meeting as well. And the appointment of the first round of people to the two-hundred-and-fiftyth anniversary committee. So those are all items that are on the agenda, either for next meeting or the meeting thereafter, just some of those are out there.
And the next meeting is the ninth?
The ninth, and the meeting after that would be the twenty-third. So we have waited President's Week and School Vacation Week, so, which is School Vacation Week. And another update for all of you is on streetlights, I know this was requested, so I'll, I'll walk through a couple of things, I know it's late. So, when I came on board, there was this, this was considered a fatal complaint that the town needed to approve then, and we just had to buy them. One of the first things I did when I had time was to ask what we were actually buying, and no one could quite answer me that question. There was just, there was a number of streetlights. And, and, and as time went on, I finally asked for more detail. You know, it was, what's going on, what are we, what are we gonna buy? So we had a couple of conference calls, and I was literally on, on a road at one point, I was on Cedar Street, stopped in front of a couple of poles on a conference call and saying, well, what about this one, what about this one? They refused to give us geolocations, they just, they refused, they said it was security or they couldn't extract them. So we ended up, they gave us a spreadsheet with a pole number and, and a location. So we ended up having to hire our own contractor, which, which we did. And over the summer, the contractor went out and geolocated with a little device and put on our mapping every light in town. The work was completed, and a reconciliation uncovered a number of non-working and non-locatable lights. Non-working, obviously, meaning ones that were dark. Non-locatable, meaning they did not appear to be where they said they were. And that number was substantial enough to make me raise my eyebrows. That was all transmitted to National Grid after summer and September, and we said, okay, here it is. And we asked it again, and again, and again. Finally, after numerous attempts, we filed a demand letter in December saying, okay, this is enough. And we left, we, by, by law, you must do this, here it is. And we sent it to the, the PSC as well. So today, spurred by a lot of work behind the scenes, we, Brian Joyce and I had a conference, a quick conference call with our local National Grid rep, who admitted that there were some issues and has promised to address and move forward. So they're going to give us a response to our report, and, and try to address some of the discrepancies of the lights that don't seem to exist. The ones that don't work are the ones that don't work, we can, we can deal with that. There's gonna be a follow-up call next week and a meeting thereafter, so that's actually in progress, fortunately. And they've acknowledged the town's concerns over both the non-working lights, in some degree, have refunded, and the ones that don't seem to exist. So I did stress that, you know, the non-working ones are one thing, it's bad enough, but the ones that don't exist are very problematic.
So. You're just not looking closely.
Yeah, so, you know, they're hidden, they're, they're, they're dark lights.
Those lights.
So, no, I'm not gonna, we have some numbers, I'm not gonna share them because they're all fungible, but they were substantial enough. We're talking about between ten and twenty percent of the lighting, if it not work, you're not locatable. So.
Just, just to clarify for the board and the audience, keep in mind that we pay currently for street lighting based on a, on a per-item basis and its estimated usage of electricity. So if between ten and twenty percent are there, that doesn't mean that we're not paying for it.
No, no, we're paying the full bill on a, on a less than full product, so. The good news of all of this is that we have a better handle than we've ever had before. We're going to generate some savings as a result of this, and we're gonna, at the, at the end of the day, have them under our control and management, which is gonna work a lot better. And now with UFC Click Fix, people can then report the lights and actually be able to get something done, and then be able to track them, which is a good thing. So, so that's in progress, so the good news is that that is in progress. Grid is finally responsive, again, the call happened today, so I will get, update you all shortly.
Just have a question. Is there any identifiable means to find out what age these lights are? So does that ever have a.
Yes, in theory, they know how it is.
Put in a nineteen-twenty-something, and if they paved the road and knocked it down, and, you know.
You mean, well, the poles are all, these are all theoretically pole locations, right? They're pretty much all on poles, and all poles are supposed to have little ID numbers on them.
Yeah, so that ID number should probably give you the time it was put in, or?
Well, at least it gives you a location, I mean, the light, all the lights, all the lighting fixtures are placed in, you know, comparatively recent times. There's no, there aren't many gaslights.
Just, yeah, like the pole, if, if there's one that's missing, could have been missing for twenty years.
Well, it, it's absolutely possible that, that, you know, and what, if we, you know, if you don't have the information, you can't even ask the question, so.
I just wonder if they have a, a list of when the pole might have been placed.
They very well may. I mean, at this point, I'm just trying to get, we're just trying to get them to give a response to our, hey, what about the missing lights? So they are, so over the next couple of weeks, we expect an answer. We're in the process, by the way, we have another call set up, and then a meeting after that, and a reconciliation will back from them, so. And our data is, you know, we have this detailed data for the first time. The fact that we had to do it ourselves, that turned out to be a blessing, because if they could have given us a list, then we would have quite frankly never known. It is disturbing to think that there was this much of a discrepancy. But it just goes to show that how low a whole level of priority it was, unfortunately, so.
Right, and, and, yeah. Having, you know, concluded with these observations, it seems likely that we would have some element of leverage with respect to.
Terms of refunding, yeah.
Plus the fact the lights have depreciated further, you know, they haven't been out there putting brand-new fixtures on anywhere, so what's been out there is depreciating as well, so we should get what's out there at the price. And the green communities, the last piece, the green community's official unveiling is on Thursday. If any of you are available, it's Thursday at three forty-five in Wamuth Town Hall. Surprisingly enough, at Wamuth Town Hall, so that's where the, that's where the awards or the new recognitions for the South Shore, this will be given out. I believe Lieutenant Governor Polito will be there, so if any of you are available, just let us know, and, you know, I'm planning to be there, some members of the Attorney and Energy Commission might try to be there.
What is this, the award of the?
This is the official recognition, yeah. It, it's the official recognition of the town's receipt or of, of green community status.
So they do each year, give recognition to communities?
No, this is, we, we just turned the program, so.
We're just on time.
In theory, we'll get a, probably a fake cardboard check with the, with the amount of money on it that we can show. We'll also get some signs, and we'll do another one here, when we actually install the signs, we'll do something here in town, because they give us signs that say you're a green community. It's highly unlikely, we've been recommended to put them, for example, in front of Town Hall, in case where we can see them. We should put them on the entrance roads, the signs that tell you, you're speeding by forty miles an hour, you don't pay attention to them, so. We'll put them in a couple of nice prominent places when we finally get the signs. But that, that's, that's on Thursday, so that's, that's good news, so. And any questions for me, while you're having?
I've had a busy night so far.
Yeah, I mean, by the way, one other nice thing, thank you to all the residents who said nice things about Public Works. Yeah, I mean, by the way, one other nice thing, thank you to all the residents who said nice things about Public Works. Carlos, we're very happy, they work very hard, and people sent them a lot of kudos for their quick response over the weekend, so.
Good, great, that was good.
Good, was quick.
They were amazing.
Yeah, that was a, it was a greasy drive.
Yes, it was.
All right, last item on our agenda is review of the minutes for 112.
And will we accept minutes of 112 to 116, the rest left, maybe?
A second.
Okay. Any further comment on the meeting minutes from 112? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Hi, all right, pass unanimously. I don't have any topics not anticipated forty-eight hours in advance, so we can move to adjourn if I have a motion.
You can move.
One second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.